Good evening and welcome to the September 27th School Committee Meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded and aired live by LCTV. It is also being livestreamed on LongMeadow.org. First on our agenda tonight, we have approval of the minutes. Are there any questions or suggestions regarding the minutes tonight? Okay. You have a motion. Michelle?
I move to accept the minutes from the September 13th School Committee Meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining. One abstention. And visitors' comments. We have one visitor with us tonight. In full disclosure, she is my daughter, who's an eighth grader at Glenbrook Middle School.
Hi. My name's Ella Hutchins and I live out 128 Hilltop Road. I'm an eighth grader and a student vice president at Glenbrook. I'm here to ask about getting air conditioning for Glenbrook. The climate at the school is extremely uncomfortable. As you may know, the windows are casement windows. This may result in not being able to get window units. I also know central air is very expensive. There are other options, though. For example, we could look into standalone units that cost about $300 a unit, from my research. Also, in the computer lab, there are air conditioning units in the wall. I know it's possible to get a freestanding air conditioning and vent it through the window. I understand that the open classrooms are a part of the problem, but I think that if a majority of the classrooms have air conditionings, it will circulate through the school and the fans can help. It is not an option to put air conditioning in rooms with no doors. There at least should be units put in classes that have them. Another consideration is a day of quality issue between the two middle schools. Having gone to both schools, there's a huge difference in temperature between the two schools. Williams stays very cool during the summer months, unlike Glenbrook. I collected data over a few days by putting thermometers in several of the classrooms. It was frequently 10 degrees hotter in the building than it was outside. The temperature in the rooms at Glenbrook have reached well above 80. According to research, temperatures above 80 degrees can cause a health problem, depending on other factors such as activity level, clothing, and the physical condition of staff or students. Warm temperatures can also really impact student performance and test scores. Studies show that classrooms with warm climates, around 81 degrees, end up with about 20 percent lower test scores than those with controlled climates, which are about 72 degrees. I'm a hard-working student at this school and try my best always, but it's hard for me and many other students to concentrate with the heat, and I know how hard it is on the teachers. It's brutally hot and hard on everyone. I understand there's talk about building a new middle school. Since this is many years away, we need to do something in the meantime. This is something that's very important, not just for me for learning, but also for students and teachers' health. I will present a letter to the superintendent, along with a petition signed by 100 students so far at Glenbrook School. Thanks so much for letting me speak for my classmates and being the voice for my school. That means a lot for the students to be able to give feedback. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, why don't you stay there for one minute? I just wanted to say that I had nothing to do with this at all. Ella was talking to students and teachers at Glenbrook and started a petition there and collected signatures and promised that she would come and speak at the meeting. And it just so happened that Dan McCarthy was here tonight, and I didn't know if you might be able to speak to -- I know you've had conversations with Nicole Allen about options, potential options for air conditioning there, that Ella possibly could report back to her student council. If you don't mind, Dan, just hopping up to the microphone? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
The Glenbrook School is very, very uncomfortable during the summer or shoulder seasons up there. They have fans running most of the building, stuff like that. It is very, very -- I've seen them when they had class day up there. The kids were just drenched. It was tough. But you'd have to have an engineer come in and do a heat load study and go like that. I support the idea, and I, you know, just right off the top of my head, if we put that many window air conditioners or split systems in and stuff like that, I don't think your electrical system is sized big enough to take all that load. So, I mean, you really should do a study before we just run out and throw money at something over there. But it would be a nice thing to do up there, you know, but I'm not sure how to go about it. The options of the wall units on there, you've got one condensing unit outside with three evaporators outside each building, but again, you'd have to size them so, you know, the entire building, because after all, you kind of dilute what you're getting up there. You're like throwing good money up to bad, I think. So, if you were going to do something, I really would recommend having an engineer come through and look at it. I am, you know, concerned with it. We try to run the fans as much as we can, but there's just heating and ventilation system, but there is no air conditioning, I think, except for the office over there. I'm not sure what we can do. I mean, put window air conditioner in there, but I'm not sure you have the power to run
I don't know if the committee's ever talked about this before, Tom, or has looked at it. I know that it's been discussed in the past, but yeah, I guess the question would be for future, maybe, if we could do a study, how much that might cost, and that's something I could talk to you about, you know, after the meeting.
Yeah, you can talk after. I mean--
Or Ella could talk to you about it.
That'd be good.
Even better.
Even better. There's a moment, right?
Russ?
So, we've done a couple walkthroughs, well, more than a couple, I guess, the middle school subcommittee, and we went through Glenbrook, and that is one of the biggest concerns they told us about was the, really, it's also the cold, heat and cold, and the fact that you can't really climate control, so sometimes it's really hot, sometimes it's really cold. Different areas of the building are different. And obviously, like a year like this year, where you have almost a whole month of hot temperatures.
Shoulder seasons, May and September.
But it used to be where, you know, beginning of September might become hot, and then the rest of the month is okay. This month, the whole month is hot. So, I totally understand that. I mean, that's something that we have looked at, and the challenges you described were the things we heard, which, you know, it's one, it's hard because it is open concept. There's no doors. It would be hard to equalize the temperature in the whole building the way it's set up right now.
Correct.
We hadn't heard about the electrical, but it's an interesting point, too.
I mean, right now, it was built for the load of the building.
We do need to do something about it.
Yeah. John?
First of all, I want to thank you for coming in. You're quite articulate and you made a very good argument.
Thank you.
We're looking at Glenbrook and Williams Middle School, who have a statement of interest in altering them, and you underline our concern about the conditions of the building. We want students to be comfortable and not be worrying about temperatures, and be focused on the lessons and the work of the day. We're going to try and look at it. We're going to probably be submitting SOIs, and we've got an active committee that's looking at both middle schools. We're running into a problem with money, and it's always been a problem here in Long Meadow. Rational argument, humane standards up against fiscal principles. But thank you for coming in. You've done yourself well, but you've also helped the committee understand the problem.
Michelle?
Just quickly, Ella, you did a great job.
Thank you.
You highlighted some points that we had noticed, but I think you explained them really well for people that aren't in your situation, sitting in the classroom. And I think John spoke to the long-term solutions that we have or we'd like to find, but I do think we maybe need to look at some shorter, short-term solutions, because that, you know, a new building would be quite a few years down the road, so.
Yeah. When my girls first came home complaining of the heat, I sort of thought, oh, yeah, it's warm, okay, it's not a big deal. But when I went for Parents' Night, I don't know if anyone else in this room was at Glenbrook Parents' Night, sitting in those classrooms, it was like nothing, you know, it wasn't like a typical hot.
Correct.
It was really torture. And that was in the evening, you know, later in the day, and so it definitely gave me pause, having that experience myself, so. Whatever we can look at in the short term for those students and teachers and staff at Glenbrook would be great. Stephanie?
What kind of access do we have to, like, the town engineer, someone to go look at what the load can handle at the school, for the electric?
The town has a retainers, engineers, we already have, assume it's an hour, around $125, $150 an hour for engineers. We just have to, you know, figure out how much we want to spend on it, and, you know, we do have access to engineers, it just costs money to get a program together like that.
So, it's not something the town engineer can do?
I don't believe, I think our town engineer is for highways and such like that, not for heat load calculations.
Okay. Thank you.
You're good.
Next on the agenda is school committee comments. Michael?
I just wanted to ask or mention, I noticed that we had not been doing the Pledge of Allegiance, and we haven't been reading the mission statement, and I wasn't sure if there was any particular reason for not doing the pledge and reading the mission statement. I think the mission statement is a nice reminder of why we all serve and why we're here, and of course, you know, it's traditional to start our meetings off with, you know, a pledge of allegiance, but if we can bring that back, that would be, that would be great.
Yep. We could definitely, if folks would like to put that on a future agenda, to discuss the pledge and the mission statement, I would be open to discussion about that. If anyone has comments about it tonight, and, you know, school committee comments, feel free also to comment on it. Otherwise, I can put it as an agenda item for discussion. Did you have a question? Sure. I just didn't realize why, was there a reason why we stopped doing it, or did you just forget? No, there wasn't any particular reason. I've just been sort of restructuring the agenda, so. Oh. It's definitely something that we could discuss at any point. John?
Well, I for one have wondered on numerous occasions why we say the Pledge of Allegiance, and we say it every two weeks. It's like, are we in danger of somehow losing allegiance to this country if we don't keep checking up on people? You know, this whole legacy of the Pledge of Allegiance goes back to 1890, when it was designed as an acculturation proposal for immigrants and trying to shift people's identity away from their home of origin to the United States. It was also picked up in the 1920s and again in the 1950s as part of the McCarthy era. I really wonder if we need to do it. I mean, maybe once, at the beginning of the year, and I think that should suffice. I think we would start to notice if someone was starting to lack appropriate allegiance behavior, so I'm not particularly concerned about it. Perhaps it would be good to remind ourselves of the mission of the public schools. I think that'd be more appropriate and directly relevant to our work.
Yeah, and I think if we want to have a mission statement that's read at the beginning of each meeting, we should review it as a committee now, this year, and decide, you know, if that's the mission statement we want, if we want to continue with the same mission statement, if we want to tweak it, that might be something policy subcommittee could look at, so. Anyone else? Anyone else for school committee comments?
I do just--
Stephanie?
I just wanted to bring up the fact that there were five call-outs last week for crossing guards, which prompted the schools to send out an email to parents, letting them know that one of the intersections would not be covered in the afternoon. So, that meant that kids had already gone to school and were going to be riding home without a crossing guard, and all of the posts are deemed dangerous, that's why there's a guard there. So, I'm hoping that we can work with the Long Meadow Police Department and come up with a better Plan B for when this happens. Now, last week was extraordinary in that five people called out in one day, but I know historically, and this has been an issue, where crossing guards haven't shown or there's a shortage. I think this was the first time I, as a parent, was notified. Maybe it happened before and I don't remember, but that was an improvement, so parents knew that the intersection wouldn't be covered in the afternoon, whereas last year, there was a time where it wasn't covered, and it was a really dangerous situation. So, I'm just hoping we can work with them. I know the town is responsible for paying for the crossing guards, but I'd like to see some more collaboration between the school and the town in making it as safe as we can, so. I'm not sure if, how we want to do that, if--
Yeah, I think that's a great point, and my understanding is that it was an aberration to have that many, as you said, that many call-out on a given day, and so I appreciate the response of the police department to cover the posts eventually. It took some, took some doing during the school day, and an initial email went out to parents to notify them that this was a concern and that we were working on it, and so, good news is, by the end of the day, they, through Tom Maz's efforts and the chief's efforts, we were able to get the posts covered, four of the posts were covered by Long Meadow Police Officers, and then one of the posts was called, covered by a substitute crossing guard, so. But I think your interest in a Plan B makes a lot of sense, to make sure that we have a protocol and an understanding of what will happen and how we will cover posts in the event that crossing guards call out. That makes sense.
And they had acknowledged that it is, it is an issue, and they want to work with us to figure out something, so.
I did speak with Tom that day, excuse me, as well as, I also emailed Chief Stankiewicz about it. I appreciated that you stepped up, Stephanie, to offer your, yourself, in case that they might need your help, and I know that many parents have done that in the past, so I did suggest that we keep a file of parents who are willing to fill in in case of any sort of emergency, and John, I thought that was a good idea as well. So, I hope we can follow up with him on that and keep that list, and start to keep a list just in case, because there are, there have been times I've noticed as well. But he did a really excellent job of getting everything covered in a very short amount of time, so we're grateful to him for that, and handling a very tricky situation very well, and thank you for your help as well.
I was just going to add--
Yeah.
And just, I, maybe one of the solutions potentially could be, because not, not all of them are, not all of the crossings are actually dangerous. A lot of times, the police department has just responded to parents who have said, I'd like a crossing guard, you know, and sometimes they're just side streets. So, potentially, depending on where the, you know, the absence is, they could kind of pull one off of a less, you know, busy intersection and maybe move them to cover for the day, if that's maybe more appropriate. Obviously, we want as much coverage as possible, but that's another solution we potentially could offer to them.
I think one of the problems with that is, my understanding is Carl--
Masafaro.
Masafaro. I think they've restructured and looked at all of those crossing guards pretty closely. Last year, I know they did, they did a study and they had officers out observing for long periods of time, over many, many days, to identify the intersections that were in need of crossing guards, so it's, it is my understanding that it's a pretty tight group of areas at this point, that there aren't any, I'm not sure if Marty or Tom, you have any additional information?
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I can add is that I believe they're tracking the number of students that are crossing at each of the sites to kind of gauge, which are the heavies traveled in terms of the various posts--
Yeah.
--that currently are staff, so that they can have some data to refer back to.
Yeah.
And I, just to add, they did, they had deemed that particular one the less traveled of them, so they had taken it from that. The problem is, you can just have two kids go down, and that's a blind area there because of where it is, so I think they're all, they all have some safety issues associated, and that's why the guards are there, so.
Yeah, and the issue, I think, is not knowing, a parent not knowing that the guard's not there, who might otherwise drive their children to school if they're concerned about that intersection as well, so, yeah.
Yeah, my expectation would be that if we're having a situation, that we communicate it out to the parents and that we have a Plan B to make sure that the intersections are covered, and that's something that we'll certainly follow up with the chief and Sergeant Masafaro on.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Okay. Any, any other school committee comments? Michelle, did you have anything you wanted to say?
I just wanted to let you guys know about things that are going on at LHS.
Okay. Is, does anyone else have? Yeah. Do you want to?
Yeah, sure. So, at LHS, last Friday morning at 7:15, we had a meeting called an ESFAC meeting, which is typically where the elected officers, as well as the faculty, get together, and it's just a great way of knowing what other class officers, class officers are up to, and so I thought I'd share some of what happened at the meeting. So, first of all, the senior class is working on all of their activities for the senior, all their senior activities, so they're working on the senior class play, which is in November, and they're also working on other events like, such as prom and High Meadows and other things that were important. We just had the, we were talking about helping new students that had moved into the district and how we could incorporate them into activities. So, Mr. Dunkerly is currently working on emailing all the class officers a list of all the new students that have come into the district, so that we can try to incorporate them, and if they're sitting alone at lunch, we can, we know who they are and that we can try to bring them within our friend group. And other important events that are coming up is the music, for music, we have the Chamber Concert, which is October 26th, and that's just a night where students get together and, without a conductor, they perform their own musical pieces, whether it be instrumental or choral. So, yeah, I think that's it.
Just underscore, Michelle mentioned the ESFAC, the Student Faculty Advisory Council, and I think you guys meet every day? Is that, or?
So, the each, like, each class meets every day, and then we meet as a group once every month.
So, it's a, it's a great vehicle, hopefully, to, you know, give students a voice, and I know that's, that's something that's important to Principal Anders, and it's great to get the feedback from that group, so thank you.
And it's not only, like, important to know what everyone else is doing, because the freshman class, where the officers were just selected, and they get a lot of feedback on how, like, other classes have done things and how they can improve or just model what they've done in the past. So, it's just really nice to see how everyone works together.
Thank you. Stephanie, do you have--
I just wanted to commend you on that initiative to reach out to those new to the district. As someone who personally went to a high school, new to a district, I can relate to that, and that transition being particularly difficult when you don't play a fall sport especially, so I think that's great. I would have loved it.
We tried it out last year, and it really helped. It made a big difference, because the advisors, because they have lunch duty, so they can tell who's sitting out and who's not. So, they, we introduced this last year, and it really helped, so we're doing it again this year.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Right. We will move on then to superintendent's report.
So, there is a written report in your, in your packet, and I'd like to quickly highlight a few items in there. One relates to district-determined measures. Now, I'm not sure if this has been a source of interest to the school committee recently, but the, I think it's just important for you to know that the state, the Department of Education, is reconsidering its approach to district-determined measures, and these are common assessments that are, were expected to be factored into the evaluation process, and I think this is welcome news. It allows us to focus appropriately on common assessments as a, as a way to align our practice across grades and across grade spans, without adding the undue pressure of trying to determine an educator's impact, sort of numerically, on student learning. So, this, this was welcome news to the educators everywhere in Massachusetts. The Close Coalition, I thought it important to acknowledge and report out to you on the work of this coalition. This is a drug-free community coalition that was, it includes community reps from a number of different sectors. Stephanie represents, I'm not sure which sector, but is a representative on the Close Coalition, and Shelley Warren, our Substance Abuse Coordinator, right now heads it up, and they're engaged in some really important work, and they have, among other activities, they're planning a sort of a small film series for parents, and they're also looking at doing some community-wide surveying on, on drug use in the community. So, it's, I thought it important to bring that to your attention and to really highlight and underscore the great work that they're doing. MCAS results, we will be mailing those home on Tuesday, October 4th, and we can talk at some point about a, the timing of an assessment report to the entire school committee based on the results of the 2016 MCAS tests. Perhaps your first meeting in November would be a good time for that. That'll give us ample time to review the results and analyze the results. Water testing, I communicated this to families recently, but it's important to reiterate that the DPW is using a grant from the Mass Department of Environmental Protection to test the taps and water fountains across the district for lead and copper content, and so appreciate Dan McCarthy's efforts and the entire DPW for proactively taking a look at this. This is not done in response to any current concern, but rather, it's just a proactive involuntary measure to test for lead and copper. When the results are received, we'll be sure to keep you and the entire community informed. This is, it's a big undertaking. I'm not sure how many taps and water fountains, but it's in the hundreds and hundreds, I'd say, right down there. And finally, I'm sure this is on your radar screen, November 5th, the LEAF Gala, Black and White Gala at Twin Hills Country Club, and the opportunity to purchase tickets at goleaf.org, so we're looking forward to that event, and we appreciate the support of LEAF as always. And beyond that, I'd like to take a minute, if you want to do this now or if you're going to wait a little bit, to kind of talk about my annual goals, the annual report.
Yeah.
And I can circle back to any of the items if you have any questions. I want to just present to you in very broad strokes my annual plan. These are essentially the goals that I would offer for your consideration, and that if they were approved, they would be part of the evaluation process, and they would guide my work going forward. Just to orient or reorient the committee to the educator evaluation process, this is the process that guides all educator evaluations in Massachusetts, from superintendents through assistant superintendents, principals, and classroom teachers and other educators. So, you start with a self-assessment process, and then there's a goal-setting stage. The work of implementing, at some point in the middle of the cycle, I would want to, I am required to report to you on my progress towards the goals that I will discuss momentarily, and at the end of this school year, the school committee would be responsible for producing a summative evaluation of me as superintendent. So, that's the cycle that guides the annual report that I'm about to talk about momentarily. I can stop there for a minute if you want, if that, this probably looks familiar to most of you, if not all of you. So, the superintendent's annual plan by DESI regulations has three components. There needs to be a professional, at least one professional practice goal, at least one student learning goal, and then the district improvement plan is expected to be part of that annual plan as well. And then each component is expected to include a reflection or a correlation to the DESI standards for effective administrative leadership. The goal statement itself, and then I am expected to provide you with some indicators, some progress indicators. What are, what are the measurements or the things that you could look for to gauge my success in meeting the goals? So, what I'm going to pass out to you, or you can take before you go, is, is a really detailed annual report for you. I'm not expecting that you would read this tonight, but at your next meeting, I suppose, it would make sense for the committee to dive deeper into my annual report or my annual plan, and then either approve or disapprove of the goals that I offer for your consideration. But I would like, just in broad strokes, to-- But I would like, just in, in broad strokes, to kind of give you some sense of where I'm headed on this. And again, I'm not, I'm not looking for approval or disapproval tonight because I want you to read the full document. But in broad strokes, the, uh, there's a few goals that I will offer up to you and they'll be, you'll get hard copies and electronic copies as well. The first relates to essentially communication and community partnerships, uh, to develop effective partnerships with, uh, staff, families, town officials and community organizations in support of the goals that we've identified here in this district. And, you know, one of the things I'm interested in again is, is making sure that I'm engaging stakeholders, uh, you know, and by way of example, senior centers, selectmen's meetings. Uh, I'd like to leverage or access LCTV as a communication tool, uh, and, and community chats going forward. You know, there's a lot of big issues in front of us and, uh, to the extent that I can help, um, keep the community informed and engaged, I think that would be helpful to all of us. And then specific attention on this goal would relate to the development of the district improvement plan, school safety, student health and wellness and school budget needs. So that's the, that's one of the goals relating to communication and, and, uh, family and community partnerships. The second professional practice goal relates to, uh, safety, health and the social, emotional needs of students. And as I indicated at your last meeting, my intention is to create two working teams, uh, one relating to, uh, safety and security, the other relating to, uh, health and wellness, and that we would, uh, use these two teams to kind of guide our work around, um, children's safety, health and social, emotional needs. So that's the second professional practice goal. In terms of student learning, uh, you know, one of the, the big initiatives this year is the, is the, um, implementation of the new science series, the FOSS science series at the elementary level. And it's something that, um, I want to see through successfully. And we've talked at this committee about the plan for implementation and it's something that I, I want to kind of keep my eyes on. And so I've set that up as a, as a student learning goal. And so that's it. It, again, I'm only offering to you sort of in broad strokes where I'm headed with this annual plan. The, the detailed documents relating to the annual plan will be in this folder. We can get that to you before the end of the night and we'll send it out electronically as well. So that is in broad strokes. Uh, what I would offer to you is the annual plan and then some of the other items from the report. If you have questions on them, I'm happy to answer.
Does anybody have any initial questions? Thank you for, for your presentation. John.
I didn't see anything there about social studies history.
Always on my mind, yeah.
But it's not one of your goals?
It's not one of my goals. I think right now, you know, and I think one of the things about goals, you know, for me anyways, is certainly this doesn't capture everything that I'll be up to this year, uh, but maybe the high leverage areas, the points of emphasis. And in terms of social studies, the state is reviewing the, uh, the history and social studies framework, um, currently. And so we expect perhaps by the end of the year to have some sense of where the state is headed with that, with that curriculum and those standards. So, uh, that is in flux, I'd say. That, that will, social studies, being a former history teacher, always on my mind and...
One other thing, uh, you had DESE up there, that's the Department of Education.
Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Elementary and secondary, okay. That's for the people at home.
Oh, yeah. My apologies.
Good question.
Yeah, try to avoid the acronyms. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Thank you, Marty.
All right. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the School Committee Chair Report. I'd like to report that we had a joint administrative meeting on Tuesday, September twentieth. For those of you who are watching, a joint administrative meeting means that, um, we, the school department, representatives from the school department meet with representatives from the town department. And at the meeting were myself, Marty, Tom Mazza, Russ Dupere, and from the town, town manager, Stephen Crane, finance director, Paul Festerzak, and select board chair, Marie Angelides. This is the second meeting we've had so far this year. We've been meeting about monthly, which will continue. And we had some very general discussions about budget and projections for the upcoming year. So we're just starting to get a feel for what's going to be coming down the line and making sure that we really keep communication open between the schools and the town. Um, and I think that the meetings are very effective in that way. And I will try to do my best to report back regarding the substance of those meetings. I, I did raise the issue of potentially collaborating on the building projects. I know that a lot of people in the community are interested in bringing together the three building projects that we have on the horizon. Uh, the community's been talking about the DPW project and the senior center project and of course the middle schools as well. I think, and as I share the sentiment of many others out there, that if we can collaborate and we can establish some sort of working group that looks at all of the buildings, all of the facilities, all of the options and the land and the buildings that we have at our disposal or, um, you know, might be a good potential option, looking at it as a whole is always a benefit. So I hope we can continue those discussions with the town. I also, to reiterate, uh, our earlier discussion, there's a new traffic safety sergeant who's coordinating the crossing guards. This is a new position, I believe, as of last year.
I think it's new for this year, I think.
For this year? Okay. Carl Mazafaro. Um, and I am very interested to get feedback from parents and staff and anybody else regarding crossing guards. So if you do have any opinions, have observed anything positive, concerns, please be sure to contact Superintendent O'Shea or myself or the entire school committee so we can make sure we're on top of that issue. And for your calendars, our joint meeting with the select board is scheduled for, uh, Wednesday, October fifth at six P.M. And that's all I have.
And that's held in this room?
Yes, that will be held in the school committee room. Do we have any other reports tonight listed under administrative reports? Michael?
Let's slide back to me.
Okay. Lit, lit, nothing?
Um, I can, for, yeah, for LPVC, um, I can just say that last Friday, they had a ribbon, ribbon cutting ceremony for the C-Tech machine tech, um, technology shop. And I had a meeting there the day, day before, so I got to view it, everything. Um, it was amazing. It's all up to date. This is technology that, um, workers use at the, um, you know, where they build airplanes and things like that. And I have a lot of confidence that the students working in there will be just finding jobs right away into this, in those industries.
I actually attended that.
Yeah, it was crazy. I can't believe how things have changed in twenty years.
You know, the best illustration of that, when I, uh, you know, everybody remembers the soapbox derby cars, the wooden soapbox derby cars. So now in the precision machining shop, they do the soapbox derby cars, but they're made out of metal and they're, they're, you know, designed on a computer and measured on a computer and put through a lathe to produce as a, as a piece of metal. So it's, and they have the competitions the way they used to back in the, whatever, the fifties and sixties and, you know, back in the day, so.
They're, they're making the, like, they're te, they're using the machines that they use when they go into an actual manufacturing position.
Yeah.
And these machines can basically cut metal within like a micron, which is like a one thousandth of an inch or something like that.
Yeah, yeah. The width of a hair, a human hair is, they can measure it down to that level, yeah.
And, um, you know, I gotta be careful about how I talk about it because we played a big role in my other job in helping support the funding for that. So I was really excited to see it and it was a cool, cool ceremony and excited to see the kids actually use those machines.
That's great.
And I really wish that, um, our students would take more advantage of the programs that they have over there because not everyone's an academic scholar.
Right.
It's amazing.
Do you think that students have an understanding of what's available to them?
No.
I wonder if there is a way that we can make that connection a little stronger?
They do do a tour in eighth grade.
Okay.
Um, and I, but I don't know, it might be, uh, like a stigma or something, I don't know.
Yeah, I think there's a few efforts to get the word out about the career and technical education programs over at the LPVC. Uh, they do the, our eighth graders do the tour and then I believe we invite the career tech guidance counselors to some of our, um, our parent nights and orientation nights just so that everybody knows the opportunities that are over there.
Yeah.
But, uh, yeah, I mean, it would be, it would be, I think it's a well-kept secret in some cases. And it would be, um, it would be a great idea to try and make sure that kids understand the options.
I think we need to also do some education for parents, honestly. Uh, you know, I was asking, uh, Andy Churchill, who's the superintendent of the collaborative, how many Long Meadow kids are going to come into this precision manufacturing program? He said, honestly, not a lot. And I said, why do you think that is? And, and, you know, ultimately the reasons are because vocational training and manufacturing, but vocational training, they get a bad name, especially in a district like Long Meadow where we have focused so heavily on college prep for years. You know, and every, every parent from Long Meadow wants their kid to go off to a four-year college and wants their kid to be successful, but at the exact same time, these jobs pay seventy thousand dollars right after graduation. So, you know, we, as a, as a board, as a district, need to, uh, really think about ways we can reach parents and talk to them about the fact that vocational training and skills training, where people are making things and, you know, pursuing careers in culinary arts, in graphic design, in cosmetology, in precision manufacturing are really, you know, keys to creating not only a successful generation of people, but helping our region as a whole revive itself. It's real economic development at its core.
Yep, and something that we lost along the way, that was part of our education in Long Meadow.
I had to go to middle school and then went away.
Yep, and, and I think what you're speaking to is, is the fact that not all students and not all families are wanting that traditional four-year college track, that there are many, you know, there's a diversity of interests and how can we make sure that parents and students understand the options?
And so we talked, uh, Jess and I talked about having, uh, Executive Director Churchill from the LPVC come to an upcoming meeting, so that can be part of the conversation when he appears, yeah.
I wonder if he's ever spoken at the high school, to the kids at the high school directly?
I think they send the, uh, the LPVC Guidance Director and perhaps the principal, but I know more likely it would be, uh...
It would be Don Jarvis, right?
Don is the principal and, uh, the guidance counselor at LPVC represents some of the programming.
And they offer tour too for students of LPVC. So kids go every year to look at the facilities and the programs that they have.
Stephanie? And I also want to, um, just make mention that I think we play a role in this, in the stigma as a district because we in the past have based our success on the percentage of students who go to a four-year college. So I think we have to take a step back too and look at how we assess our success. And one of the things I really would like to see, um, in the future is, is getting out some sort of survey about what happens to these kids when they graduate, when they do go off to a four-year college or when they get a job or when they do whatever they do. We don't really have any data, um, any year out. And I believe, um, I've heard other schools and, and different, um, then you speak about their data five years out and what their students are doing, and I don't believe we have that. And I think when we talk about success and how we prepare students, um, for life after LHS, we need to look at, bless you, uh, what that actually looks like and not gauge it just on acceptance to a four-year school.
Absolutely. And I agree with that.
Yeah. Nichelle?
I just wanted to say that I remember at the end of freshman year, we did have a presentation for career tech. And it was about an hour long and they did show us videos and all the options that we had if we wanted to end up going there or doing a program.
Thank you.
Is it possible for students to take courses there while still being enrolled in Long Meadow? It's not an all or nothing proposition?
It's a half-day program.
It's a half-day program, okay.
They proposed it as a half-day, yeah.
Okay.
So all the core classes would be in the morning and then there would be a bus ride there.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You listened well. Thank you.
Okay, let's, I want to let Dan McCarthy, um, come forward, if you wouldn't mind, sir, um, just to be available as we begin our discussion about capital planning.
Marty, will you?
I'm gonna bump this just ahead. Uh, Tom, are you comfortable with pushing this ahead of your items?
Absolutely. I'm not going anywhere tonight.
Diane, is this eight twelve or eight fifteen?
Fifteen.
I'm on the other one right now.
Thank you for making yourself available this evening. Appreciate it. And I will hand it over to Michael.
Thanks, I'm just getting set up real quick. Um, just give me just one second.
Tom, if you wouldn't mind giving a brief introduction.
I think Mr. Clark, uh, can handle that, yes. I believe he is.
Okay.
Unless, if he's not, I will certainly will jump in and assist him.
You know, you've always been so supportive and I...
I try.
I'm just letting it warm up a little bit. So, uh, to get started, uh, the town of Long Meadow, like most other communities and the state and basically any government body and probably even companies, uh, goes through a capital planning process every single year. Uh, and so I'm gonna get into sort of what that process looks like because I know that we have some new members on the board and I'm not sure the community necessarily understands, uh, you know, what that process looks like either. So, uh, today what I'm gonna do is run you through, uh, what the capital planning process looks like on the school committee level or on the school district level, on the town level. Uh, I'm gonna run you through how we make our decisions about what gets proposed to the school committee, uh, what happens after that as well. And I'm gonna talk a little bit about the things that didn't make the cut in terms of the priorities that we've received. Now, this presentation, um, I'm sorry that it's not in your packets, I didn't finish it until today, but Diane does have a copy of it, um, in PDF form and I'm happy to send it around as well. Uh, but you do have in your packet a document that has a list of priorities and a list of items that are not priorities. And I'm gonna go through why they're not priorities and I'm gonna go through the mentality we used, uh, or rationale we used in, in terms of planning those priorities that we've listed. So to start, we'll run through really quickly what a capital project is. And so for our purposes, capital projects or the funding that goes into capital projects are for the repair, replacement, improvements to existing systems, facilities, infrastructure or equipment. So that could mean mowers for the DPW, trucks for the DPW, uh, in some cases it's been computers for us. Uh, and I list infrastructure in there because previously the board of selectmen has due some funding to pay for things like sidewalks and paving. Uh, under the current guidelines, and these guidelines were developed, uh, by the Capital Planning Committee, or, uh, a capital project for our purposes must cost at least ten thousand dollars and have a useful lifespan of ten years or longer. Uh, and from a budgetary perspective, the town typically allocates two percent of the overall town budget to capital planning. Um, and that's through the capital stabilization fund, uh, as well as, uh, two percent of the operating budget. That has crept up recently in, in past years and part of that is because the former chairman of the select board, Richard Foster, uh, wanted to, and in some, in some ways was successful in developing a pavement management plan. Uh, but if you know Richard, you know that he's worked on roads his entire life, so that's why that crept up. But the, the bottom line is, is that two percent is never gonna be enough to cover the needs of the entire community, let alone our needs as, as a school district. And you can see that because what's in front of you right now costs in excess of a million dollars. Um, and two percent of a fifty million dollar budget's only about a million. So, uh, so what does the capital planning process look like? And I apologize if that's small up there. Uh, but the way it starts is the town manager gives a directive to departments to come back to him with, with their, uh, priorities. Uh, after that, the departments report those priorities and that's what we're doing tonight. The school department will report its priorities to the town manager. Uh, and those get given to the Community Preservation Commission or the Capital Planning Committee. And that delineation basically gets decided by, I would say, Dan, honestly, as to where he thinks the appropriate funding source should be. And those two committees will evaluate the projects and they will make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen. Following that, the Board of Selectmen will approve a number of those projects for inclusion on the town meeting warrant and they will go to town meeting for a vote. And that's how a capital project becomes funded. On our level, it starts, it's a little bit more micro. Uh, the DPW has its priorities and many of them are on the list. Those are identified through custodians, through routine building maintenance, through issues that arise throughout the year. Uh, I know that the superintendent and Tom also asked the building principals for their input and what projects they would like to see, uh, or what items, uh, they think are gonna be the most useful. And then someone like me, and I know, and I've done this for the... And then someone like me, and I know, and I've done this for the past few years, Liz has done it recently as well, uh, will sit through a series of meetings with the facilities manager, the superintendent, or the assistant superintendent for business operations and superintendent, uh, to review those projects, uh, and to help shape the priorities. Uh, and my role is obviously to provide a little bit of board oversight, but also to kind of think about things from a political perspective, as well as to represent our interests, which is the health and safety, uh, and quality of life of our students and staff. So that's how we develop our priorities. Uh, and feel free to stop me at any time, if I'm going too fast, or if you have any questions. So how do we decide what becomes a, what, what basically makes it on here? Our top priority is always gonna be health and safety, uh, things that affect students' well-being, it's gonna be on here. Cost, is it cost prohibitive, or can we afford it? Is it something that is going to be considered or not by the Community Preservation Commission, Capital Planning Committee, or the Board of Selectmen? Because that consideration is always weighed in the, in the recommendations that are given to you. What does the DPW think? Do they have items that they think are critical, uh, to repair, or do they think that things can be held off? Has it been a phased project? And you'll see that one of the projects on here has been phased, uh, and we've done that with a number of projects, including Williams Middle, uh, Middle School tile replacements, uh, carpeting replacements, window replacements, uh, on here tonight, you'll see exhaust fans. And then finally, quality of life for students, so, is, is, or quality of life for staff? Is it something that is just going to improve, uh, the quality of life for, for people in the building? And last year, and part of that was wallpaper replacement. Uh, sometimes it's on here, one of the things that's not on here, but is a quality of life issue, is the lockers at Williams Middle School. Things like that is how we decide. Uh, and after health and safety, they're in no particular order, maybe cost still stays number two. Um, so what sort of approach did we use this year? Uh, so this year, we, I, I considered sort of the political nature of the middle school question, which I know is on our agenda for later tonight, and, and there's a reason for that, and it's because some of the systems and some of the structures within our middle schools are very costly, uh, but there are things that we need to consider when we talk about them. So I'm gonna get to that a little bit later in the presentation. Uh, we're gonna look at items that have sort of a large impact, uh, things that are gonna help us save money in the long run and also reduce costs, uh, in the short term. And finally, things that present obvious health and safety challenges, uh, for students, staff, and people who work within the buildings. So the first project on here is actually none of those things, but it is the most, probably the most important in terms of our ability as a town to do our jobs. So, in two thousand and eleven, whether, and this is sort of just for everyone's edification, uh, the town, Select Board and the school committee, uh, merged our technology departments, and so technology is solely managed by the school department. We receive a appropriation from the town above what we normally would have received to fund the management of their technology systems as well. We have a number of servers throughout the community, most of them stationed here with a backup relay at the police station, that serve mission-critical business functions, which include Munis, the town's accounting software, Power School, the school's management software, uh, as well as dispatch for, uh, for emergency, uh, for our emergency departments, police department, fire department, and EMS. If these fail, if there's a loss of data, then that is going to significantly impact our ability to provide, uh, the state with certain reports, provide students and parents with certain data, and it's going to really cause a lot of chaos throughout the community. And finally, the other piece of this is power enhancements. So that includes backup batteries, which will help ensure continuity of services, uh, through power disruptions. So if there's a blackout, if the high school goes offline for whatever reason, even though we have a generator here, or if the police department goes offline, even though they have a generator there, uh, being able to ensure continuity of, uh, services is, and many times lifesaving, uh, for residents in the community, especially when that information is, you know, reliant on electricity. So, this is the number-one priority, because, uh, we really can't do any of the other things if this doesn't work. Uh, we can't do CAD CAM in the DPW, we can't, uh, track trucks, we can't, uh, you know, respond to plowing needs, we can't do anything, uh, without actually having our entire system online. And that also includes our phone system. The entire town's phone system is done, is now fiber optic, and that runs through our head-end room.
Michael, is number one, under funding requests, it says eighty here, and on, on your presentation, it says a hundred and five?
So, I can speak to that.
Okay.
We have an updated, uh, price proposal from when Michael, uh...
Okay, from when this was printed?
So the eighty is the correct figure.
Oh, okay, okay.
When we met, the one oh five number was where we were at, we were still waiting for a firm quote on, uh, one of the two, uh, phases of this project, and so we have those firm numbers now, so it's eighty thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any numbers off years that have changed since I've been?
I think that was the only one that...
All right, so that's, that's the number-one, uh, priority.
What is the end-of-life projected at? Is it next year, or how?
You know, it honestly depends. Uh, I think Nick and Kevin before him really does a great job of, you know, ensuring that components that need to be replaced are replaced, but when you're working with items like a server, you're dealing with systems that quickly become out of date and can't support updates to these large software packages like Power School, like Munis. And so, uh, that's, that's another consideration. Uh, then you also have the fact that these, these parts go out of warranty, uh, that they can't be supported as well, that they, you know, may not have enough memory, things, you know, sort of things like that, uh, that impact our ability to operate them efficiently and successfully and, and provide services in the manner that, uh, you know, the communities come to expect.
If I could just add, uh, our current equipment is no longer available by the manufacturer, so if it were to fail, even if it hasn't reached its end of useful life expectancy, we potentially could have systems non-operational for a period of a couple days while we're trying to find a replacement piece. The goal would be, if we are successful in getting funding, we would use the current equipment as our backup offsite, um, as a redundancy, and so that, yeah, if we were to ever have a failure, uh, with our head-end equipment, we'd be able to have a recovery in place. So, we're not just gonna dispose of it, we'll keep it running, but it won't be operational on a daily basis, uh, in the head-end room. It would only be there for backups. I believe the servers are getting on, uh, I think some of them are newer than that, I wanna say they're getting on about three or three and a half years.
So this is, I mean, and this is something, and there's, number nine on the list is something that we also are gonna have to kind of have a, a separate conversation about, uh, when it comes to how we fund our technology needs. This is gonna be a recurring cost, and whether we treat it the way that the town treats a fire truck and put money aside every single year to anticipate replacements is a separate conversation for the time being, but we should have that conversation and consider how we triage and fund, uh, our technology needs into the future. So, are there any other questions on number one, or do you wanna move on? Okay. So, number two is the Wolf Swamp and Blueberry Hill Fire Suppression Improvements. Uh, so, after the renovation to both schools, uh, there was some fire suppression, uh, systems that run along the outside of, basically the outside wall, the envelope of the building, and they freeze during the cold months and have a tendency to burst. And so, Dan has, uh, worked with the fire department and worked with our vendor, and the proposal is to move those systems in the classrooms that are on the outside of the bill, like, you know, the, or at least the outside walls, nine feet in, which is still within code, uh, and all of the ceiling tiles at the same time will be replaced, which is a nice add-on to that. Um, so that's, you know, that's at both schools, it's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, and honestly, it's great, not great to have your sprinkler system bursting, uh, and, you know, having to become turned off, uh, frequently. So, that's a simple, you know, explanation of what's probably a little bit more complicated of a project, but doable nevertheless.
Diane, something, 'cause when we did the walkthroughs as well, I remember the principals and Mr. Ross were talking about how we actually kind of overheated some of those rooms to keep it from bursting, so we're probably wasting energy at the same time.
Yeah, we pop ceiling tiles, so some of the heat can get up into that space to help try to prevent the freezing from occurring. It's really the sprinkler heads that we've had the issue with that then burst, uh, and so then that creates an issue in those classrooms, trying to keep them at a comfortable temperature for the students. So, yeah, you are correct.
That's one of them bursting up there. I pulled it up. The next one, and this one's actually been on our list for a while, uh, and we were kind of able to ameliorate it a little bit, but it's, it's really not tenable anymore, is the Center School Fire Alarm Panel and Detectors. And the simple matter of the fact is that the fire alarm system at Center School is the age of the renovation, so at this point, we're looking at about sixteen or seventeen years old, uh, right? Yeah, around there. They are no longer, that model is no longer supported by the vendor, uh, and what'll happen is that the fire alarms trip, and the fire department has to be dispatched, and the students have to be evacuated. And you had mentioned there was a day last spring when it happened, how many, I don't remember how many times.
Two or three times, one week.
How many times?
Two or three times.
Two or three times in one week. So, we're not just talking about a sort of safety issue, and, and I, they do work.
Correct.
They are working, there's no, like, there's no immediate threat to student safety.
And they are to code.
And they are to code, the fire, and we recycled some sensors from high school, uh, you know, in past years, but this is sort of just a normal expenditure that we're gonna have to incur.
Yeah, I mean, we replaced the detector right now, it's three hundred dollars plus a head, and they're not compatible with the cars inside the, the head-end. So now, we're, it's really trying to get this device, talk to this device, it's, uh, it works, your children are safe, you're around the building, it's just very tough to keep, to keep the system running.
And I can't underscore the safety of it, you know, that they're, these fight, these are operational, they do work, if there's a fire, the students will hopefully be evacuated as quickly as possible. Uh, it's just obviously a disruption to students, staff, and, you know, it's taking, taking the fire department coming and turning them off, and that's honestly times that they could be dealing with actual emergencies. Um, so, it's not good for anybody.
Worst of summer, we were waxing all the floors, and the fire department had to come through, figure out what's head was going off.
Oh, no.
So, it was fun.
Slipping.
Dan, how many times would you estimate, I know you said it happened a few times in a week span? Per year, can you give a guesstimate?
I can't, I mean, I've been here six months, I know it's gone off at least six, seven times now.
This school year?
Correct.
Six or seven times?
Not, not, not since September, since I've been here, so in six, seven-month time, at least six, seven.
So we're averaging about once a month, an unintended fire.
I mean, so we replaced a bunch of heads that are just well past the life expectancy, they just failed, they, they've shut down, and we've moved on, but, um, getting parts are, are really, really getting tough for this, this system, and getting them to talk to the other parts of the system are getting tougher.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and so, like I said, this has been on there for a few years, and I think we're finally at, at a point where it's, it warrants being pretty highly ranked.
Mm-hmm.
Glenbrook Boiler Piping System enhancements. So for anybody who was on the board last year, you're gonna wonder, why are we talking about Glenbrook's boiler when we funded it last year through capital funds? Uh, part of the reason is because the, there was money appropriated, and it was not enough money, uh, to do the job. So right now, there are two boilers at Glenbrook, and they cannot talk to each other. That's a recurring theme through these capital projects, is that our technology is, uh, not being supported well enough. So what happens is, you've got one boiler that is working at its full capacity, but the building still only remains about, what, sixty degrees on a, on a very cold day?
On the design days, it won't, you can't have both boilers firing the same way, so what they're trying to do is get it so there, there's no thermal shock to both boilers and have them work.
Yeah. So this sixty-five thousand would be an additional appropriation to a project that is already partially funded, and would help them, uh, would help complete the project. So our boilers could then talk to each other, and the building could actually get up to a, a relatively comfortable heat, hopefully not over eighty degrees.
Yeah.
But what does the temperature get up to on a cold day? Sixty?
Sixty, sixty-two.
Again, I've only experienced it when I came in March, so, uh, but I've heard the kids had a secret code one while, at a really cold days, because you only have one boiler to fire, or the other boiler. They can manually move the, the valves, but it, it's really something to get both boilers to fire together.
It's, it's affecting the regulation of the heat when you have to do that. Any questions on that? Okay. Number five is the Williams Middle School Exhaust Fan Replacement Phase Three. So, the, we've been dealing with this for as long as I've been on the committee. Uh, these exhaust fans are original to the building, which means that they are well over fifty years at this point. Uh, the exhaust fans essentially help with the exchange of air and, you know, to maintain airflow in the classrooms, uh, and that's part of the design of the building. Uh, this is the final phase of that project, and it's relatively short money, uh, but it's been, you know, kind of hanging out there for a long time. Uh, so, I'd like to get the project done, if possible, um, just to finish it. Do you have anything to add?
No, the ones that I replaced are beautiful, nice working fans.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Dan, can you speak a little bit more to this particular issue? Do, do the other schools have the same type of exhaust fans as Williams?
All schools have exhaust fans, let's put it that way.
Okay, they're just more noticeable, maybe, at Williams?
Correct.
And, um, as far as you know, the other schools, exhaust fans are in good working order compared...
Good, they're working, yes.
Compared to Williams. And how, how does the exhaust fan, you, what role does it play in terms of the overall air quality in a building?
These take all, a lot of the restroom exhaust, uh, kitchen exhaust, all the classrooms, and they just, these are just a direct exhaust, they're not recirculated into the, into the heating building. Some systems, like, um, Center School, they have an exhaust fan that come back, and so much will be ejected out of the building, and some is reheated again, coming through. The exhaust fans at Tocqueville Williams are a hundred percent out.
Oh, okay, that's what I was wondering, it's not bringing in fresh air to the building?
This is just out, no, it's all, this is...
And if you visit a classroom, you can see them in the window, they're like above some of the windows, and they just pull the air out, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Williams is a fun school, I tell ya. All right, uh, LHS Pool Painting, which, uh, is probably gonna cause at least one member of the Select Board to, uh, you know, have a conniption. Um, so, the pool was renovated during the high school building project, and, uh, we hired the Sheriff's Department to come in, and they used the wrong type of paint to paint the interior of the pool. Pools require, believe it or not, an aquatic paint, one that can be used in a wet environment, and pools do tend to be kind of wet. So what's happening is that the paint is just chipping off, and it's clogging our filters, uh, and it's causing some issues when we clean it, uh, and so, there's no, you know, we test the pool multiple times a day, there's no threat in terms of health or safety, but it's obviously a systems issue, it's, it's a cost that we need to incur, so, uh, this would, we'd obviously empty the pool and, and paint it the right way.
Correct, this is gonna be done during the summer.
Yeah, probably, yeah.
We hired the Sheriff's Department?
Yeah, so the Sheriff's Department has its own, uh, it's called Mass Corrections Institute, and our industries, they have their own company where they will come and they'll do carpentry work, or they'll do labor, they'll have their guys come in, and I would also just kind of say that this was done at a point in time when there were no students in the building, and so it was a safe activity and under supervision of corrections officers, so no quarry issues flagged there.
Can I ask a question on this?
Yeah.
So, whoever painted the pool, have you talked to them? Is there any sort of...
The prisoners painted it.
I'm sorry?
The prisoners painted it.
So they, so it wasn't part of the whole project? This is totally separately funded from the...
Yeah, so, the renovation to the pool itself, so the surge tank repair, uh, the renovations to the heating and cooling in the room, uh, the painting all, like, of the actual room itself, a lot of that was funded through the building project. I believe that what happened was the four, two facilities managers ago, uh, he just hired them to come in and, and take care of the routine painting.
So it was funded, uh, you know, I know who painted, but it was funded through a separate from...
I think it was through just the DPW's, uh, maintenance budget.
Don't know.
Yeah. Do you know?
Yeah, my recollection is we incurred a small cost for the, uh, the jail providing supervisors to be here while the inmates were doing the painting. So we had a very small cost for the, the labor that was being provided.
So all of the painting in the school, was this separate when the high school was designed? This was a separate, because I, you know...
I think the painting in the school was done, or the pool painting was done, I think, not as part of the building project, but it was done concurrently, if that makes sense.
Yeah, the renovations, as Michael mentioned, didn't necessarily touch the inside of the pool, it was the drainage all along the decking around the pool, um, and there was, I believe, some work done on the surge tank, repairing a crack that needed to be patched, was my recollection of.
My recollection was that there were some significant exclusions with the pool because it was in good shape. So I think it was really not part of the, that was my, that was my opinion.
We paid through the box.
John's been waiting to talk.
Well, the Massachusetts Building Authority was not gonna pay for.
Right.
The pool.
We paid for it.
Oh, okay.
But I have a question to follow up on. Stephanie said, if you bring in painters to paint something, shouldn't they give you their best judgment as to quality material? And if they don't use quality material?
What I propose to do is have Hill Associates as an architect to create me a spec, to go out to bid on it and give me a warranty with it. I believe you got the shot blast or sand blast the paint off that's left.
Right.
To give me a good structure so we can bond to it. And that's how I propose to go forward with it.
They're gonna have to scrape that whole.
Who's gonna pay for all of that, though?
This is at fifty thousand, they should be able.
But we paid, we paid something for the original paint job, didn't we?
Very little, it seems.
Yeah, I think it was in the thousands, a few thousand dollars, John, was my recollection.
Kind of where you get what you pay for.
Someone once said a couple of thousand here and a couple of thousand there, it starts to add up.
It does.
Well, we're gonna do it the right way this time so that we don't have to do this over again.
So again, I will go with Hill Associates. That's our resident engineers now. Have them create the spec so we can go out to bid and get comparable, have one product being specked and we'll go from there. That's how I propose to do it.
Any other questions on the pool?
What kind of water testing is being done? What, do you know? I don't wanna put you on the spot about the, you know, nuances of water testing.
I know we hire a company to come through and check the levels and purity of the water, stuff like that. I couldn't tell you exactly what tests they are. I get copies of them every so often in my computer, but they're tested on a regular basis.
Yeah, I just have a lot of concerns about, I assume, a latex-based paint.
I'm not sure. I think this should have been a rubber-based paint. And I don't doubt they put something like that. I don't, not sure if it was a product or the application.
So it could have been an epoxy paint?
Nah, more of a rubber-based, I think. I don't think it was epoxy. And I think it was more of the application, not the paint itself to fail. If you don't prep the surfaces right, you're not gonna get a good job.
There's something about this pool painting that really, really concerns me. In terms of being priority six, I'm just gonna put that out there.
Well, so.
No, 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 meaning that it sounds like it's really important.
Well, what I was, what I was gonna say is that these are our recommendations of the priority, but the board.
Yeah.
I was gonna conclude with that. But the board can move some stuff around and actually pull projects off the list that aren't on there. So, if you want to move it up, I mean, where you're able to do it, this is just how we're presenting it to you for your consideration.
Right, right. And I think it's just a point of, like you said, point of consideration is the safety of students swimming in a pool that's peeling paint, basically, and how we prioritize that. So, okay.
All right, so number, anything else on the pool? Okay. Number seven is the Wolf Swamp preschool playground. So, as you may know, the preschool was previously based at Center School. And after this, after we redistricted, the preschool moved to Wolf Swamp and some of their available classroom space. They currently do not have a playscape at Wolf Swamp. And so this made the list. Principal Nelson and potentially Dr. Guile, you know, requested this. But, so, we're looking at about forty thousand dollars for a preschool playscape. I think that there, and I should have said this at the beginning. I, when I was looking through these projects, I think that there's opportunities to cobble funding in other ways for some of these that may not make a priority list. And what I'll also say is that when the capital planning committee does their evaluation, we're not getting nine things. We're maybe getting our top two or three, maybe four. They'll evaluate what we put in front of them based on what they think the need is. But this is an opportunity for us to articulate what we believe our needs are. And that's the beauty of bureaucracy.
So, this is back on the table. My, from what I had heard and seen last year, this was on the table. I was actually surprised to hear they did not have the playscape at the start of the school year.
Yeah.
I thought an application was put into the community preservation committee to try to fund it. This is something that's a big deal because it's disrupting the recesses. You have a preschool without equipment that's appropriate. I was sad to see that this wasn't looked at before the preschool move. But, and I was sad to not know that this had not been done. Because there are, as you said, I think there are other opportunities to try to get this done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I really wanted to have seen this done for the fall, so.
Well, I would just, if I can just respond to that, I agree with you. And I think that part of the challenge that we faced at the time is that this cycle is, was outside of our redistricting process. And so identifying funding to pay for that and also doing, going through the process at the time probably wasn't realistic for the beginning of the school year. And it is, it is, you know, sad that the CPA didn't seem to, you know, prioritize this higher.
Did they not pick it up? Did it get to them?
I believe, I believe that it was submitted to them last year, or it didn't even make it that far. Oh, good, didn't even make it that far. So.
The application was too late.
Is that what it was? Oh, so the application's gone to it.
And that only happens, that's once a year, right? Those applications to communicate?
Yeah.
We should do it again this year, on time.
Yeah. I think this should, this should definitely be a CPA-funded project for us, without question. Especially because the law now allows us to do new recreation. Whereas before, it was renovating existing recreation spaces, so. Any other questions on the playscape? All right, number eight.
I hope it was better than that.
Well, I think it will. I Googled it. I just Googled preschool playscape.
That was a non-specific.
Most of these, with the exception of the pool photo, are non-specific. But I did Google on the high school pool. This is not a real valve, for number eight.
Good to know.
I just Googled valves, so.
You didn't go take photos on site?
I did not.
Next year.
Next year. So the valve replacement, we have needs in all of our buildings. So we, originally, this was gonna be a Center School project and we kinda took a step back and said, this really should be a district-wide project because they tend, they will fail and do fail throughout all of our schools. And so, the best way to handle this potentially could be to give Dan a pocket, like a bucket of money dedicated to just replacing these as they fail. And so what these will do is they, you know, will help us, you know, continue to regulate energy management throughout those schools. You know, we have both electronic and pneumatic valves that need to be replaced on sort of a rolling basis, like I said. And, you know, what, essentially when a valve fails, it means that we can't regulate heat in certain classrooms or rooms. Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I mean, they're all, it's cyclical right now. It's right, the town was great. They redid the buildings all sixteen, seventeen years ago. Everything was put at the same time, now they're all failing at the same time. It's not just regular maintenance now. It's not that they're all gonna fail just like that, but we've noticed them start going and going. I don't wanna get in the position of my brass predecessors here. If you walk around some of the places, this is a great town, it really is. The guys did a great job putting stuff in there. But the mechanics in years past are great, very clever. If they can't get it working and they can't replace it, they, they'll come away to work it, but it's not the correct way. And we pay for that later on down. And Glenbrook is a fine example of that. I mean, you can see some of the valves failing in the system over there and, you know, we just try to work our way around it. I don't wanna walk in that, on that path. It really, we should start dumping some money just specifically for HVAC repairs. Not to be in place else, just for your DDC and your pneumatic valves. I mean, pneumatics, I mean, that's a thing in the past now. They don't really make those anymore. Everything's DDCs, more easy to control and stuff. But they're all failing. So, you know, my budget is so big, but after a while, it's not specific to the schools. And you've got some gems out there. We really should take care of the buildings like that and that's what I'm trying to do.
I'd also say that Dan, I was very impressed because, you know, he's the third facilities manager that I've worked with. I know John and Liz as well. And this is the first time I've gone through this exercise and we've talked about things like, you know, preventative maintenance. So I appreciate that, for sure. With no disrespect to his predecessors, because Chris was great and Adrian worked hard. So, finally, and this is one that I'm not really thrilled is on here, but I'll, sorry. Town and school replacement of computers. And so, to give the board a little bit of context, right around the time the high school came online and even a little bit before then, we began having an influx of technology into the schools. And part of that was the former superintendent felt very strongly we should have a technology-based curriculum. And so, we have a lot of iPad carts, we have a lot of computer carts, we have a lot of tablets and, you know, Chromebooks that were not bought by the school department, but they were donated by, you know, really great organizations like LEAF and PTOs. And they're just approaching end of life. The iPad carts at this point are iPad twos, which you can't even buy in a store. And so we have to have a conversation about how we replace them. That number is very, very large. It's one point three million dollars. That's the amount of technology we currently have in the schools that at some point are gonna need to be replaced. Or they're still workable for now. And when I talked earlier about having a plan for how we integrate technology into our budget and how we think about technology funding, five years ago, we entered into a lease agreement with Apple. And out of that, we were able to get, you know, computers and tablets in the hands of every teacher and ensure that there was enough technology to go around, you know, or throughout the district. And that was great because it was really kinda the first time that we were able to move technology into our budget. And previously, it was done through the capital planning process. But the problem is, is that as boards continue to move around and players change, you have people who don't necessarily agree with that definition that when we look at an iPad cart, we know that that's twenty thousand dollars. When they look at an iPad cart, they might see it as twenty-five hundred dollar items. And so it may not meet the criteria that the capital planning committee uses. And it also puts us in a really bad position of making our technology political items and asking town meeting to fund them when town meeting won't fund anything. That, you know, that we really, well, they will fund a lot of things. But, you know, I don't wanna put, I don't wanna see future boards and students, honestly, in a position where we have technology that is inconsistent. Because I was a student and lived through that in this district. And I spent blocks, in the entire fifteen-minute block, trying to get online to do a project. And I sat in a library in the old high school, not being able to work the computers because they were old. And honestly, this is not ten years ago when I was in high school. This is a time when we need to be connected, when we need students to be able to perform functions on computers in, for everyday tasks. And so, it's on here because we need to have a conversation about it. And we need to recognize that we have a big nut that we have to fund and we need to figure out the way to do that. So, servers are up front, computers are at back. And this is, that's really, you know, why it's on here. And also because they're, you know, failing.
Russ.
Is this the cost for students and staff to each have a computer?
As well as town, as well as town technology. So that includes town hall computers, it includes other departments, it includes CAD CAM machines and DPW and, you know, and other software.
How many kids are using their own iPads at this point?
Nick gave Tom all these statistics.
Well, back to your initial question. Staff computers have been paid through a lease.
Yeah.
It's a five-year lease. We actually are in year five. So we'll be having a dialogue as part of the FY18 budget in terms of what we're gonna do with staff computer equipment. This request is basically a one-for-one purchase for the existing equipment. It's a total of about fifteen hundred devices. I wanna say there's about a hundred and seventy-five on the town side and maybe thirteen hundred and fifty on the school side. So it's not necessarily a one-to-one program for all students. But there are a number of iPads, about four hundred and fifty iPads on the school side, which are about four to five years old now. They're no longer available. So it's not necessarily would be this high if we went to a less expensive Chromebook instead of costing a thousand dollars for an iPad laptop. You know, you could, or an Apple laptop, you could go with a Chromebook for two hundred dollars. So there definitely would be savings. But, so, in terms of, you know, some of the equipment is more than five years old. Some of it's getting on six or eight years old on the town side. That was maybe recycled from the schools to the town as we replaced equipment on the school side. It was better than what the town had, so we were able to repurpose it. So, and again, as Michael indicated, it's, we need to start having this dialogue about how do we fund the replacement as it's gonna come up. And if we don't talk about it for a few more years, the equipment's going to be dead and we most certainly are gonna find ourselves in a very difficult position trying to maintain students' access to technology.
And it puts us in a position also with the state. DESI has certain requirements in terms of the quality of access students have to the internet, to technology. They have A, B, and C-class computers. Most of our computers are probably still A-level, possibly B-level, which is good. But when you get into that C-level, that's when you become sort of underperforming. And again, you know, speaking from personal experience and not having to do all the things that students have to do today when I was in high school, it was challenging then. I can only imagine what it's gonna be like in the future. And so, this is, this is what we need to talk about through the budget process this year is how do we integrate technology into our lines in our budget so that we are not leaving students behind and so that people like the assessors can drive around town and do what they need to do as well?
Mm-hmm.
You know, I mean, so, these were good, these were good end caps or good bookmarks to.
Michelle.
Is this something that the technology, we formed a technology committee. Is this something that they're a part of in looking at, you know, the long-term plan and what we're gonna?
So the technology, there's two committees. There's the superintendent's technology committee, which I don't know if Marty has plans to talk, to work with them. I know that was Marie's kind of idea at the time. And then there's the technology advisory board, which is actually required by charter, which we formed following the integration and the adoption of the administrative code that consolidated our IT departments. That board is supposed to be the board that goes to town meeting and advocates for technology projects. It's never gotten off the ground and we formed it, we appointed members and then their chairperson became very unresponsive and never scheduled meetings and they couldn't reorganize. And it kinda became this, you know, boondoggle of a committee. I would recommend, Jess, that you, you know, work with Marie Angelides. Marie Angelides and I actually had to send a letter to the chair when I was the chair of the board, telling him that if he didn't organize a meeting, you know, we'd be relieving him those duties, which couldn't really do under the charter as it exists. So, it's vitally important that we get these boards up and running. To answer your question, they can play a role in informing how we purchase or what type of technology we purchase and what, and how it gets deployed. But in terms of finding ways to keep it, you know, sort of sustainable within our budget, that's on us. And we have to, we have to figure it out.
Well, but maybe like, you know, they, that could be part of their.
Yeah.
Charge to, you know, Chromebooks, what are they good for? And, you know, do they make sense for us?
And we can also do something along the lines of saying, you know, and then throwing fingers up. But let's say we have, we're gonna dedicate two hundred thousand dollars a year to technology in our budget. Make it work. You know, that sort of thing. And that's very unrealistic to ask them to do. But they can inform what we buy, how we deploy it. They can work with Nick to make sure that, you know, it's consistent with our budgetary constraints. And, you know, as we sit here getting ready to gear up for the FY18 budget and we're talking about capital planning, it's not gonna be easy to do that, but we have to figure out a way to do it. And so, I'm almost on my presentation. I realize it's taking a lot longer than I thought it was going to. Stephanie?
I just wanted to add, I'm really glad you talked about the technology and brought it up. And it is something that I'm hoping maybe we can bring to, put on the agenda in some way as well as figuring out if we bring back that committee and make it active. Because technology on the budget is a huge line item. And it's helpful to hear about the lease agreement that's expiring and what is actually reflected in that line item, what's not reflected in that line item, and what needs to be.
Yep.
And so, I would like to have this discussion and how we will fund it going forward and the needs. And a lot of, you know, the student technology has been purchased by outside groups and it'll be important to hear what's effective, like Michelle said, what's needed for testing, what's needed in the classroom, what wasn't actually needed. So I think that we need to really have this discussion.
I'm glad you also mentioned testing because it's important to remember that MCAS 2.0, while this year is usable with pencil and paper, next year will not be. And so we need to be able to provide students with access so that they can take standardized tests. And that's, whether we agree philosophically with them or not, that is the requirement and we have to do it. So, that's, glad you mentioned that. So that's another reason to have this dialogue. I know we're talking a little bit later about middle schools and I think it's important that, from a capital planning perspective, we talk about why things were absent from the list. On the list of, on the overall list, you'll see that there's roofs for the buildings. There's other items that I didn't include on here. And the reason that they weren't included is because they are very expensive items and do not necessarily fall within what is a realistic ask for capital planning. A four million dollar project that gives you two roofs on middle schools is most likely not gonna be something that gets funded through the capital planning budget and is more likely something that should be bonded for, through town meeting. But that being said, we consistently run into an issue when we have any sort of project related to the middle schools before the capital planning committee and before the select board, honestly, where there is some uncertainty about what this board plans to do around our middle schools. We cannot make any meaningful investment in our middle schools without having a plan. And so whether we choose to submit a statement. And so whether we choose to submit a statement of interest to the MSBA, or we choose to move forward with an accelerated repair project on roofs and boilers, we need to make a decision. And I know we're going to be making, you're giving, giving us a recommendation later tonight on, on how you want to proceed. But it's important that we ensure that whatever decision we make around the middle schools, you know, considers those, those existing costs. And is it smart or prudent for this board to approve $4 million in roofs and then ask the town to pay for or renovate a building? I think the answer to that question is no, because that's actually going to limit our ability to successfully have a new building. If we proceed with accelerated repair, which means that the MSBA will pay for the roof and nothing else, it's going to limit our ability to ask the MSBA to fund the renovation or replacement of buildings until that roof has reached the end of its useful life. And so strategically, these items were not prioritized on the list because they really should and do fall under what should be a long-term plan for our buildings and how we replace or renovate them. They need to be done. Dan's going to buy warranties, five-year warranties on the roofs.
We're trying to, I'm engaged with the contractor right now, get some prices on having our roofs evaluated. And what they will do is actually take infrared scans of all the buildings, of the roofs themselves to see if, if there's any moisture in there. And then they will give us the cost of what it takes to extend the life expectancy of a roof of five years, it warranty all the stuff. But that will give you five years to start planning, what do you want to do with your roofs? You know, this will, so I'm, I'm working on the numbers, I've used this in the past. It saved, you know, $50,000 for against a couple million dollar price, it's pretty good to extend your roof. Also with the infrared scan, it will show me where my trouble spots are if I do have a, a wet spot, it'll, it'll stick up. So that's what I'm trying to do right now, you know, come back to the board with some numbers.
Thank you.
I'm trying, yes.
Is that something, though, that we, that sounds like something we might want to include in terms of having the numbers for, you're talking about for the infrared program or for the roof repairs themselves or for both?
I haven't got all the numbers of the roof repair. I mean, right now, it's still, the roofs have not gone out, all of them have not gone out of warranty yet. So I still have a year or so to go on it. So what I'm trying to do is come up with a number, and again, it's still infancy stages of right now, come up with a number to see what it's going to cost to infrared all the roofs, come up with a plan to buy five more years, to keep the envelope tight, and see which direction you guys want to go from there. I'm just trying to buy us some time.
Yeah.
Russ?
So the two middle school roofs are roughly 20 years old. Are you saying they have one year left in the warranty?
On the warranty. That doesn't mean it just fails like that, but it just say we're on borrowed time. So if I can come in and extend the warranty for five years, as long as I, I use that company for the preventive maintenance program, they'll warranty and come back and fix any roof there is. If the, again, I'm going a little further out without a lot of information. If the deck is dry, insulation is not challenged, they might just say, I'll put a layer over it for, you know, a quarter of the cost and give you how many years left. There's so many different proposals out there. I, I don't want to give them all to you, but it's something, it's kind of interesting, kind of exciting. It, it buys you time, what it does. So you keep your envelope tight, and you can make a decision what you do with your buildings that are on.
Right.
I mean, ultimately, we need to make, you know, we need to do something with these buildings and, but we need to be strategic in how we do it. That, that's kind of what I'm advocating, because, you know, and I know that we're going to ask the select board, you know, to help us with that later tonight, but we, if we're not strategic and we're not thinking about how we can further our, our own goals and ultimately find ourselves with the product, the end result that we want, which is a renovated or new building or buildings, then, you know, we're really going to be throwing good money after bad. So we need to think about what, what we want to do. You know, we have single-pane windows in these buildings. We have, you know, at Williams, we have, you know, energy, or we have an amp, you know, the amps are too high, the boards are too low, we can't plug in, you know, all the services of the building is, is taken. You know, there's, there's so many things that are limiting us in these buildings that, you know, if we start investing money, significant money, I should say, in, in these large systems, then we're really going to be putting ourselves at a disadvantage from a strategic standpoint. That being said, you know, Dan and his team do a phenomenal job maintaining the buildings. They continue to be functional, they continue to be safe, and largely free of, you know, chronic failure of systems. And so we have operational middle schools. They're not, you know, they're not like these terrible rundown schools. They're, they are very good in terms of, you know, what they are, but they're also 50 and 60 years old. And so there's, we got, you know, we're doing the work that the state wants to see us doing. We're doing the preventative maintenance. We're keeping them, you know, healthy in terms of at least what we can do. But we're going to have a lot of costs, and it's a lot better to leverage those costs against a new building than it is, or a renovated building than it is to put them on a capital planning list and have them never be funded.
Yeah. And there are a lot of issues at both schools, particularly at Williams, of items that are really rundown, that do fall into the category of really rundown. But I think that at this point, we really need to focus on the conversation with the committee, if people have any other substantive questions about the priority list that's been presented, and any questions about the additional projects that are listed. For people who are watching, capital project prioritization process, as Michael indicated, is really difficult because we're looking at pages and pages of infrastructure, maintenance, and repair issues that we don't have the money for. So in order to, prioritizing them is a painful and challenging process, and I thank the people in this room, Michael, Tom, Dan, Marty, who participated in best effort to prioritize what we can, understanding that there are so many more needs in our schools. Is there anybody who would like to ask any questions about prioritized or non-prioritized items on the list? Russ?
Well, one comment is even with, I have a whole bunch of things on the middle school list, I totally agree with you, we probably should be doing, but we're not going to right now because it doesn't make a lot of sense until we have a plan. But even with that, we still have almost $100,000 on the priority list for those two schools. So that's kind of the issue, is over time, we're going to keep spending, which makes sense, we're going to keep those buildings long-term. But the one item I did have a question about was LHS. Principal Landers had told me about the issue with the island and the horseshoe.
Yeah.
So that's with Willett Drive and Brassy Gutter.
We talked about that.
There's been some accidents there, it's a safety issue.
So we talked about that, and for everybody who's not aware of what Russ is talking about, at the end of this drive, we're right out here leading back onto Brassy Gutter at the end of the horseshoe, they, Principal Landers has requested that we install a island similar to the one when you leave the admin parking lot, so that you have to go one way.
Like a rotary?
Not a rotary, but like this one right out here, this little island that diverts traffic.
Oh, 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 okay, yeah.
Because there have been, there's just a lot of congestion. There haven't been that many accidents, but there, and the one time we had a student hit by a car, it wasn't as a result of that, it was because she was weaving through traffic. So there's, and she was back in class by 11:00, I might add.
And there's no way to put a sign that says you can only turn?
There's, people don't care.
Okay.
So we decided that it needed a little bit of more study in terms of engaging the traffic committee that the police department and town manager have, because any sort of change to the traffic pattern is really their purview. And the other thing is that it might be something that could be done internally to some extent throughout, through existing dollars. So we were going to look at it maybe a little bit more.
I'll have to talk to facewater engineers, see what comes up with.
Yeah. That's kind of where we left things, was we talked about it, but it was, we got a, we want to kind of see what the impact would be and see what the right way to do it is.
And in the meantime, the question is, how can we get the message out to the high school community about the issue?
And we start booting cars.
Booting cars?
You put a boot on them.
Oh, so these are cars that are, that are turning when the sign says you can't make a right or a left turn?
They're going straight.
They're going?
Instead of.
And it's a no, and you're not supposed to go down that street during a certain time of day.
Okay.
So the residents are upset, and it's this whole thing.
So because it's not on our prioritized list, we need to come up with some sort of plan of communication. Maybe Marty and Tom could, could come back and give us an idea, or speak to Tom about how we can get the word out to parents and to students in an, in an effective way about that issue in the meantime.
I'll check in with him. He may have communicated that already at the beginning of the year with some back-to-school announcements, but we can check in on that.
Honestly, the easiest thing to do would be to put one of those, like, arms that closes, like, off a parking lot.
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
You know, and have it open and close during that hour. But then you get to having to have somebody to do it.
Are there any other questions about additional non-prioritized or the prioritized list? Any other? Russ?
I meant my only, like, the boiler piping at Glenbrook.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, I agree with Michael that the buildings are basically safe and everything, but at Glenbrook, we just heard about the heat, and then we also have the cold. Is this actually going to really solve the 60-degree issue?
The only thing that'll give you is, you'd be able to run the two boilers together. I guess they brought one in, one was used someplace else, and they weren't really compatible with each other. So it's not just piping up the controls and pumps in together, so. Yes, it should solve, on a really super cold days, the lack of heat.
Okay.
That's great.
So then we'll just be, the heat probably?
Correct, for the summertime.
That's great. Okay.
So I need a motion to approve the list, and so we can get it back to the town manager tomorrow morning.
I just have a quick question in relation to that. If we send this, we approve this as is, that doesn't necessarily mean that we can't ask for the preschool place state scale to be funded by the Community Preservation Act, is that?
Yeah. It means, all of these items are going to get submitted to the appropriate board of, you know, jurisdiction. So capital planning will probably receive them all, will also be applying for the relevant CPA projects. It's up to them to decide what's a priority. And I will also say that when they do have their hearing, typically, the chair and me or whoever's in my role would go and really kind of advocate on behalf of these projects. So that'll be something we get to do and remember.
CPA type line.
I have no idea, do you know?
It's not. I always thought it was sometime like in January.
So, but we could do that right now.
We could. I don't know if their application is out yet, though. It usually gets posted on the website.
We have a motion.
Do I move on the recommendation of the capital planning subcommittee that the school committee approved to prioritize fiscal year 2018 capital projects list dated September 19, 2016?
Second. All those in favor? Oh, discussion, I'm sorry.
Number nine, are we sure we want to submit that as actually on the list as opposed to just information?
I think we got to do it.
And I can, if I can, I advocated strongly to keep it on the list because there needs to be this dialogue, whether, whether it's not capital, whether it's bonding, but there needs to be a conversation across the town with the select board, town manager about the needs on both sides of technology. So I would request you keep it on.
That makes sense.
I think it's on there to talk, start a conversation.
Right. Okay, anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay.
Thanks for letting me have the network.
Thank you. Dan, thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Dan. And Dan's been fantastic, so.
Answering all of our questions.
No problem. It's been fun. I've been here six months, but you have some great stewards to the building, though. Your principals love on the work, they really are. They really care for their charges and stuff like that. It's been fun.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Do you want him to stay for that conversation later on? There's another agenda item on about building and?
No, you know what? No, that's okay. I think we might have to move that actually to overnight. Thanks, Dan. Thanks, thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
Okay. Tom, you have the floor. Finance Subcommittee report.
Sure. We met on September 21st and approved the building use request for the Halloween Hustle for Center School. We have a financial update from the athletic program that was included. There's a few documents included in your packet for review. Are we going to put this on the agenda for?
Yeah, they'll be coming to school committee sometime, maybe in October, November, we'll try to get them on a, an agenda for a school committee.
Okay. And then we have a couple of motions that Tom's going to speak to.
So the first item for consideration tonight on your agenda is a list of student activity accounts for the secondary schools. Both middle schools and the high school has a list of their subsidiary accounts or the activities that are active in their student activity accounts. With our new guidelines that were approved last year, school committee will authorize annually the, the various activities that the schools will engage in. On the second page would be a list of inactive accounts that no longer function, and schools have requested that they be inactivated or taken out of their student activity functions. And again, by guideline, school committee would have to authorize that they be designated inactive accounts.
Okay.
So I would request a motion authorizing the list as needed on the agenda.
Michelle?
Do I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the school committee authorized the activities list on the handout titled Student Activity Funds Glenbrook, Williams, and LHS dated September 20, 2016 for student activities accounts at Long Meadow High School, Glenbrook Middle School, and Williams Middle School?
Sorry.
Discussion? All those in favor?
The next item on the agenda is a FY16 revolving account report. This would be the final fund balance report for our various revolving accounts. The school department receives funding from either fees, tuitions, or revenue from the state for various areas of our operation. The largest of these operations is probably our school choice fund. We receive students from other districts, so we receive revenue each year. We also have a fund balance. So this year, we anticipate FY16 ending with a fund balance of just under $300,000, $295,000 available for unencumbered expenses. Circuit Breaker, which is funding from the state for special ed students that have costs associated above a certain threshold, the state will reimburse us at a percentage of 70 to 75 percent, depending upon the appropriation each year. This generates approximately $1.1 million, and we estimate about $60,000 being left in that fund at the end of FY16, which will then be, the committee at some point later this year will be asked to appropriate that into our FY17 budget, again, for use of, towards special education tuitions. The student fees account, which is used to collect funding for bus transportation and student parking, has a balance of about $77,000. But again, some of that money is going to be used as budgeted in FY17. As part of the budget process for FY17, the committee agreed to allow the town to use, I believe it was $48,000 in this fund, towards expenses the town incurs to maintaining and upkeep of the parking lot here at the high school. Building rental, and this is money, revenue generated from use of outside groups renting space here at the schools. We use some of the funds to hire summer custodial. We also, this year, will be using some of the fund balance to buy some custodial supplies. Again, part of the method that was used to balance FY17's budget, I think there was about $20,000 for supplies and about $25,000 or so towards summer custodial. We have a tuition revolving account, which when individuals from outside of Massachusetts request to come to school in Long Meadow, we are allowed by law to charge a tuition that is set by the school committee. We currently have one student who is a tuitioned-in student, so the funds would be received in this account and used as appropriated in the FY17 budget. The kindergarten fund, which is where we would receive tuition, again, FY17, we are not collecting a tuition, so we, we work to use up all of the fund balance in FY16. The report shows a, an estimated deficit of $199, and that shortfall will be addressed with revenue collected in FY17. So funds that were still owed at the end of '16 but hadn't been collected yet, but we have, so we've collected it this year. So it'll end the balance in the positive.
Tom, how many students did you say we have that fall into tuition?
I believe we have one.
Wow, okay. Thank you.
And then the preschool revolving account, we charge a tuition for the preschool program. There's an estimated fund balance of $14,000, and again, I think $10,000. There's an estimated fund balance of $14,000, and again, I think $10,000 is appropriated in the FY '17 budget out of that fund balance to be used in FY '17. And then transportation fund balance is zero. We use the residual balance of $4,800 in FY '16. Down below, you can see athletics. And again, as Michelle mentioned, finance sub received a report from the high school principal and the athletic director. The school committee will receive a detailed information on the revenue and expenses associated to that program, but that, their fund balance is just short of about $1,700. Again, with some revenue coming in after July 1, that was attributed to the FY '16 program that would address that deficit balance. School lunch, again, showing receipts of about $687,000 in revenue and expenses of about $688,000, leaving an estimated fund balance of about 71, which was pretty much the beginning balance. And that balance primarily will be used to pay the June invoice. That was not processed before June 30, which is why that balance is necessary because that bill is processed after July 1. And then summer school is a summer enrichment program. Students can participate in enrichment classes during the summertime, which they pay a tuition and staff is paid. Showed a June 30 balance of about $14,000. Then the final two would be the concession stand that operates during sporting events, has a fund balance of about just under $10,000. And a vending machine, which we do not receive any revenue for, but we do spend money out of, in accordance with the annual town meeting, we appropriate $5,000 in FY '17. That's going to be used to help pay for some of the speakers. I believe one of the speakers that will be coming in, that was sponsored by the Special Programs Committee.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions for Tom? Russ?
The athletic fund, you mentioned it briefly, but we're going to discuss that in a future meeting.
Yeah, the presentation finance sub will be, they'll come and present the same information to the school committee. I just think tonight with the items on the agenda was, yeah, it was going to be too much.
Okay.
So, a motion on that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you, Michelle. There is a request to use $1,700 out of the school rental fund to buy a defibrillator. We currently have one defibrillator, which is down by the auditorium. The fire department recommended we add a second one outside of the pool. When the pool is in use for youth swim, the doors in the hallway outside of the guidance office leading towards the auditorium are locked, so they wouldn't have access if a defibrillator was ever needed. So I think based on the fact that, you know, this would be used in support of the pool area and we generate some revenue from that space, I find it appropriate use of the building rental fund to provide this equipment to be available, not only to school personnel, but if the building is in use by an outside group.
So I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee authorized the use of $1,713.15 from the building rental revolving account to purchase a defibrillator for placement outside the pool at Long Meadow High School.
Sorry, go.
Discussion?
Next, sir.
Thank you, John. I was just wondering if anyone had anything else to add? Did you have something?
I was going to vote.
Oh, all those in favor? Okay.
Final item tonight from finance sub. We have a situation over at Williams Middle School, hoping to get approval tonight. We have a staffing issue where we have a vacancy of a point two position. It is a foreign language French position. We hired someone at the beginning of the year. Unfortunately, that individual submitted their resignation, and so we have had trouble trying to find a replacement. A solution that we were able to find would be to hire a certified foreign language teacher to come in and work the entire day as a substitute teacher. So they would be here for the full day. As part of that assignment, they would teach this one section of French. The challenge we have is that our substitute rate is only $80 a day, and a number of districts in the area pay a higher rate than that. And so looking at if we had to hire somebody on step-in level for this position, based on this individual's experience in working three-quarters of the day as a substitute teacher, it would come out to about $140. When we advertised it, we did not have many applicants to consider for a point two position, and we felt that our only approach to try to make sure that we had a qualified individual teaching these students for the entire year was to be able to bring this individual on and use them to fill in as a sub when they're not teaching this one section.
Russ?
I just wanted to add one thing. That next year in the budget process, obviously, we look at, the finance subcommittee was talking about looking at whether a point two position's really a good idea from a staffing perspective.
It's really a one point two.
Yeah, correct.
Any other questions? So we need a motion on that as well.
I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee approved for the remainder of the 2016-17 school year, a daily rate of $140 for a specific substitute teaching position to address an emergency staffing issue at Williams Middle School, not to set precedent in future years.
Second.
I like how you snuck that in there at the end, Tom.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much to Tom and the finance subcommittee for your recommendations and for your work. Next on the agenda, we have school committee goals as a follow-up. For those of you who are tuning into this meeting, we had our school committee retreat during our last skip... Oh, I'm so sorry. No, my apologies. Let's, I'm going to back it up here. Let's go, thank you, Marty. Let's go to the middle school working group first.
So, we met on September 21 and decided that it would be best for us to make a formal recommendation to the school committee so that we have, you know, definitive language with what we believe we should be doing in our next steps as a committee. So we, Marty, draft this language for us. Hopefully, we had a chance to review it. But just basically explaining what we think we're about to do in the next couple of months. Michael said it really well. We really need to have a plan with the middle schools, and not doing anything is almost making a plan for needing to address these projects singularly, like, all of a sudden we might need to get a new roof because we haven't done anything. So this is, I guess, the beginning of our recommended action plan. I can read it for a motion. The middle school working group recommends that the school committee begin to work purposely, purposefully, and collaboratively with the select board and other stakeholders to ensure that Long Meadows Middle School's substantial facility needs are addressed cost-effectively and in a manner that provides future students with safe, up-to-date learning environments. The middle school working group also recommends that the school committee consider the submission of a safe statement of interest, an SOI, to the MSBA in 2017 as a way to begin to explore the potential solutions while understanding that partnerships with the MSBA are difficult to establish and require years to solidify. As a way to gather community feedback on this approach, the middle school working group is recommending the following short-term actions. Representatives of the middle school working group and the superintendent accept the invitation of the select board to meet on October 3 to discuss the progress of the middle school working group. And the middle school group, working group hosts two public forums to present information and gather feedback and perspectives on the facility needs of each building. So for those two public forums, we're suggesting that we hold one at Williams and one at Glenbrook so that people can actually see the buildings and some of the areas that we're referencing when we're talking about needed improvements.
Russ?
Has October 3 been confirmed to the board at this point? I know there's a back and forth.
Right. I think what's been confirmed is that we can make a presentation to them on October 3, but based on their agenda, they don't have time for any questions or answers or discussion. I think our initial idea was that we would just make a presentation and give them a little background on the SOI process and some, you know, again, general information on the needs of the two schools. So we can do that on October 3.
Okay. So can I make a recommendation?
Michael.
More suggestion? I would see if you can get it on the next meeting agenda because you won't have a full board on Monday the 3rd. Mark's not going to be there because it's Russia Shana.
Yeah, it's Russia Shana.
And Mark's going to be the one that you want to talk to? Or at least the one that you're going to want to repeat?
So I think the only holdback was, we were, we were actually supposed to go two weeks ago, but their agenda got loaded, and so we got pushed back to October 3. And the forums, in terms of the dates that we were looking at, would, I think, fall after their, what's their next meeting?
Well, the other thing is, this is just, I agree with you that we need the whole board, but this will be a presentation to kind of give them an idea of what we're talking about. The statement of interest would actually happen down the road, as you know. I think what the working group really talked about, and John, Michelle, you can pipe in if you'd like, but basically, the, even if we want a new building, let's say, that's, you know, several years down the road, as you saw of the high school. And so we get a five-year warranty for the roof, you know, that gets us a 25-year lifespan for the roofs, but that would be if we started to go down the building project route like this year. If we wait five years, then it's another five years before the building actually might happen, so you're talking 30-year roof. You know, that's the type of thing where I think what we need to do is do these forums and everything else and figure out, if our plan is the two buildings stay and we just fix them, we need to start doing that because you can't have kids in 60 degrees or 80-degree rooms, and Williams has, you know, air quality concerns. I think those are the types of things that we need to start addressing if we're not going to look at potentially doing projects somewhere down the road. And even if the project's going to be a ways down the road, at least we know, so we're not, we're fixing the things like you are this, or we are this year with 100 grand towards the buildings, but we're not spending 500 grand towards buildings or millions. So I think it's important to stress, I think, with the board that that's the idea. It's not necessarily we need a new building. We really need to know what the town thinks about fixing two buildings we have, or creating one middle school, or whether people would accept that or not. But we need to start having that conversation because right now we're doing nothing, and those buildings are just, you know, they're not really that comfortable for the kids, especially Glenbrook from a climate control point of view. But I guess the other thing I'd say from just a citizen's point of view, I'm not, looking at these projects, I really want to see a cohesive plan. And I think we all have heard that around town. We've seen it on social media that it's not something, we can really do this in isolation. We have our silo where this is, you know, maybe the middle schools are going to happen at some point. And you've got DPW and senior center. If we do a middle school project and there's only one building, then what happens with the other land? Or if the DPW happens, what happens with Greenwood? And if it gets built over, you know, in Bliss Park? You know, those are all the things that, I think if there was a cohesive plan where the town could see where we're going long-term, it would be an easier sell than what we're doing right now. Because right now, I don't myself understand the plan. It doesn't seem like there is a plan.
There's not a plan.
John?
If I could, after our meeting on Friday, I had a conversation with Stephen Crane, and he said that the select board is strongly in favor of following through on the DPW committee's recommendation to take over the property on Dwight Road, the former tennis court owned by Mr. Shapiro.
Grand Meadows.
What is it?
Grand Meadows.
Yeah.
Grand Meadows.
Grand Meadow. And that he would like our support for their plan. Now, that means that they are not going to, he basically was saying, we're not going to entertain schoolwork this year. We're going to do this DPW project first. I don't think they have any plans to do anything for the senior center. And so I'm projecting now, we didn't get into that part of the conversation, but he was asking for our support for the DPW committee's plan.
Doesn't that come with a cost?
Well, now you can start talking bargaining. Yeah, how much do we want to charge him for that support in terms of political? Well, that's what we're talking about.
That's why I said it.
I'm not talking money, but...
A little bit.
What are you going to fund besides the DPW? Well, I think we should certainly be in a position to ask them for needed roof repairs for the building so that, and whatever else we can get, if they're not going to give us or support us on an SOI for a new building.
For us?
And I also get the feeling, and I don't want to speak for them, but this strongly suggests that the senior center group that wants to get a piece of Bliss Park is not going to be, they're not going to entertain that.
They're not going to entertain one.
The idea of a senior center at Bliss Park.
The board one.
The select board one. The seniors want to be at Bliss Park, but they're not, they're not looking at that right now.
The issue is, everybody's just looking out for their own interests at the moment. So our interest should be, as a town, what's best for our town. So that includes the seniors and the kids and the DPW, but not in isolation. This isn't a race to see who goes first. It shouldn't be. And so, you know, I know you sent a letter to the newspapers, and I agree that whatever the plan is, you know, the town needs to get behind it as a town. We should do something for the seniors, and maybe it isn't just a senior center, maybe it's a community center. But whatever it is, we need to look at that because the long-term, you know, long-term in this town, do we need to address that? Yes. The DPW is falling apart, and the middle schools have to be addressed. So how do we do that in a way that's cost-effective, where our tax rate isn't, you know, spiking in one year, you know, it'll dip in about five years from now? So there's, there needs to be some, I mean, a town like this, the first question anybody's going to ask when we say, well, we're going to put the senior center in Bliss Park, the first question is, well, what do we do with the old space? You got to have a plan for it. You can't just leave it there and do nothing with it. And maybe the board does, but we haven't heard it. So I'd like to know, what is the plan for all of these projects so we can all essentially have an idea of what's going on? Other towns do it. I mean, Summers did it, Southwick did it. It's not impossible. I know it sounds like it's this, you know, it's almost like, well, we got to do this project first because the only way we can get it passed is if we focus on that project. That type of thinking's not going to work in this town. All the projects will fail. And so we actually have a plan that people can say, okay, I can see the plan. Maybe I'd like my project to be first in that plan, but it's not, but at least I can see in the future it's going to be addressed. There's nothing like that right now. We have no idea what's going to happen first. I mean, as you said, maybe it's the DPW, maybe it's the senior center, maybe middle school.
I agree with that.
I don't see it.
Michael, are you ready?
Yeah, I was just going to say that we've been asking for our place in line for the last five years. I mean, as long as I can remember, we haven't even been asking that the middle school projects take precedence. We've been asking to find out where we belong in the constellation of needs that the town has. And that's not an answer that we've ever gotten. And what we have gotten is, we've gotten our priorities rejected. You know, we've had the select board tell us that we, we understand you have, you know, middle schools that are old, you know, but too bad. And we haven't had a strong articulation of why the reason is that they are unwilling to approve the submission of a statement of interest, which by the way, is like the first in many steps to getting a new building built. All we have is that they've got, they got three emails from someone, or from three people who didn't like the fact that we were asking them to consider submitting a statement of interest, and everybody knows that three emails really means that the entire town's against it. So they've gotten, there's been, there's been no political courage, there's been no will, and there's been no, you know, sort of, there's been no sort of commitment from the board of selectmen to say, let's go forward and at least explore this and give the school committee the opportunity to bring the state in to see what's going on with the middle schools. Because, you know, you can't ignore the fact there's two buildings out there that are in terrible shape. There's two, I mean, there's actually four buildings that we want to be in, you know, be sort of inclusive. So I have no confidence that the select board is going to coalesce around the idea of submitting a statement of interest. I have all the, you know, I believe very strongly that the chair of the select board has the best intentions, and I think she will do what she thinks is right, but I have no confidence in the remaining members of that board, especially the ones who have been there for nine years.
I think in terms of moving forward this year, we really need to focus on what we can do to facilitate good communication with the board... we can do to facilitate good communication with the board and get the information to them and figure out how best to collaborate with them this year. So I really think our best avenue is to start fresh, start this year. I would, I would propose that maybe we add a bullet on this recommendation list, a joint meeting with the Select Board. I know that we had discussed, potentially discussing facilities during the budget joint meeting. There were some questions about whether we should commingle the facility discussion with the budget. It's something to consider, or we could consider a separate invitation to the Select Board to discuss this issue. Because as you are all illuminating this evening, they're having the discussions about the buildings at their meetings, we're having the discussion about our buildings and our subcommittees and at our meetings. And what we need to figure out is how to get together and communicate. So, you know, I'm really open to the board's ideas about how you want to proceed with the Select Board. Would you like an invitation to go out that would be a separate joint meeting to just discuss facilities and buildings? Or request that we add it to our agenda for the October 5th meeting? Those are just two initial proposals that I would put out there, Stephanie.
First, I want to say, I think this is great. And the one thing that struck me is the public forums. I really feel like that's missing behind the whole middle school issue, and we really need to hear from the public.
Yep.
But it wasn't just about consolidating and whether they want, but we need to hear from the public and the students and the parents who are in these buildings. Having Ella speak tonight and hearing about the conditions within Glenbrook was really important to hear, and I want to hear more about the experience within the schools, I want to hear more from the public. I think one of the big mistakes that happens in big projects like this is that the movement goes without the public behind it. And it just cannot happen without the public and hearing what their needs and what their wants are. And framing it in this way, in terms of just hearing about the needs of the facility, I think was really important. My feeling is, unless you're talking about the capital projects that you brought up or anything else, I'd like to have a public forum first before going, before the Select Board, unless the time is of essence and you're wanting to do it prior to other projects being considered, I don't know. But I really feel like that piece is, is missing. And as I had mentioned at the last meeting, when the SOI was brought up before, there wasn't a huge outcry from the public when that didn't get approved. I think we need to hear, I think information needs to be brought to light about what is going on in the, in the schools. So I almost think we need to have that public forum first.
Yeah.
Unless there's time, it's an issue.
Russ.
So Michelle, are those, we talked about two forum dates in the middle school subcommittee. One was going to be at Williams and one at Glenbrook, one in the morning, one at night, to try and capture as many people as possible. And the idea was, the forum would be about kind of pushing information out as far as, you know, kind of condition of the buildings, what do we look like if you had one or two or renovations, and kind of rough costs based on the JCG study. That, but the second point was to see what the community thinks of, you know, is one building totally just something that nobody would want to consider? Is, you know, renovating the two buildings something nobody wants to consider? Does, you know, do five people show up or 100 people? You know, we need to know, just like the DPW project, if a forum happened first, you would have heard, don't do Wolf Swamp. So I think we need to do the same thing. You know, we need to go out and do a forum first, I totally agree with that, because if we don't, we don't know, we could be totally off-base, I mean, we're only seven people. So the rest of the town may say, no, you're going to have, keep those two forever. If we heard that, then maybe we need to just start renovating the two buildings, you know, I don't, but I want that input. And I think we were looking at, did we actually nail those down? I know you had a question about one of them.
Yeah, one of them, I was, and it would help us out a little bit, I was looking to change the 14th, which we set at 9:00 AM, to the 18th at 9:00 AM. And from what I could see in the district calendar, the 18th seemed okay. I don't know if you're seeing anything. And then the next one was the 19th at 7:00 PM.
Can I ask a question about that?
Stephanie.
What I, in thinking, is that if the first forum was just set up to hear people, what are your, what you're thinking about the condition, just to get that feedback from them, rather than framing it, should we go into one and why we think, but hearing what the concerns are? I mean, because we hear it floating around us, and we heard some of it tonight, but maybe just that kind of a forum of what are your concerns with this, with the buildings? Do you have them? And then the second forum to take that information and frame it in a different way. Okay, what are we going to do about this? You've expressed your concerns, we know that X, Y, and Z is going on in the buildings in terms of the disrepair. What does the public think about what we should do? Should we go for an SOI to, you know, do a speedy renovation? Should we go for one building? I feel like there needs to be two forums to really...
Well, I think our, our intent with both of these was really to just give some background information on each school, not really say, this is what we propose as a solution. It was really, here's the situation, you know, we've got, you know, air handling, you know, all the things that we've identified, some of which are on the capital projects list. And then to use most of the forum for public feedback and gather ideas, information, how students are feeling and everything. So it was really going to be just a little bit of a presentation and then mainly the rest gathering feedback. That's what I sensed from what we're talking about.
John.
I thought the October 3rd, and we did say October 3rd, I don't know where this October 5th meeting came, that was a separate.
Different meeting.
Right. But anyway.
Yeah, the October...
I agree with what you're saying about, we need the forum. But we also need to tell the Select Board upfront what we're planning on doing. So if there's no surprise, so we go to them, I would suggest, on October 3rd and say, we are going to be resubmitting the SOI for the schools, and we're also planning on a series of, or a couple of forums in town to mobilize and also collect information and opinions on this project. So we're coming before you, not because we're trying to do anything behind your back or to subvert any plans you've got, but the upfront, this is what we're thinking of doing. And it's based on the fact, as Michael said earlier, we've been doing this concern about the middle schools for six or seven years now. Okay? So it shouldn't be a surprise to anyone that we're concerned about the middle school, except they want us to forget the middle schools. I think that's the basic translation of what I was getting from...
And, and actually, just quickly to clarify.
Stephen Crane.
That there were SOIs filed on middle school, on Williams and Glenbrook when the LHS SOI was filed. So it's, it's been, you know, considered for a long time by the school committee, and it just has been...
Well, that's true. Historically, way back, they were going to have both of them.
Right. And, and those two were, you know, they had to be set aside because we had to choose one as a town based on the MSBA. And so it's been going on for quite a long time now.
Yes.
We submitted them in 2012 with the approval of the Board of Selectmen. As well.
Wait, say that again, Michael, you submitted them in 2012?
We had a successful submission for, actually, in 2011 or 12. I remember, because Mark Golden was yelling at me and Jeb Jester.
So then what happened? Did the MSBA reject it?
Oh, it just never went anywhere, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
So, so just, just for, if I can, last year, regardless of all the things that we should have done, because there, I mean, we can all admit we had failures in terms of how we presented things to the Board and to the, you know, Selectmen and how we brought the town along, certainly PR failures. The SOI that they received was the exact same SOI with just updated information from 2012. The exact same document that they already approved once. Just, you know, you know, I appreciate that we want to work with them and we want to have a constructive dialogue and start fresh, but we also have to be realistic that we've been saying the same thing to them for years and nothing's ever happened.
I, I think what's different, to echo Stephanie's comments and a little bit of John's comments, is that this is really reaching out to the community to see what kind of support we have from parents to move ahead. And I think instead of, as we discussed very briefly at our goal-setting meeting, just being an island, the school committee trying to push this with the school, with the Select Board and it sort of being, you know, locked horns, we go out into the community and see how people feel about it, see if people feel strongly about it, get parents' feedback, get stakeholders' feedback. And I think if we start from that position, it's, that's really what matters the most. It's, it's not so much what we say, it's really what are the people of Long Meadow wanting to do. So that's why I really love this approach. And I think, you know, the more communication with the board, the better along the way.
So, and we just wanted to get to them before we went to the public forums and just say, this is what we're doing. That was really the only, and again, we had hoped to go a couple of weeks.
And then what about inviting, do you want to extend an invitation?
Yeah.
To people at any point, maybe, I'm just throwing this out there, to come to one of our meetings, to put it at the top of the agenda as, as a bit of a dialogue, question, answer. We could also consider doing that even initially, and then going out to the schools or in addition. I see that as a good addition to the process somewhere. It could sort of be the endpoint, or it could be the beginning point, or both.
I think that's a great idea. I mean, I think if we are, if we're able to tape the forums at the two schools, or I don't know, somehow record them, or give the community some time for people that didn't come to watch that, and then maybe give it a couple of weeks and then have people come to the...
We could also, when we send out the emails to everybody about the forums, which really should go to everybody, not just school committee, we could add something about, if you can't make the forums, you can always come to our public meetings, we have a public comment, you can bring your comments to us.
I think we should have a designated meeting, though, where, when you're going to these forums, hey, come to this meeting, we're going to be talking about it. And as I'm thinking about it, I think it would probably work better after the forums. And there was one other thing I was going to say, I lost my train of thought.
Or maybe a joint meeting of the Board.
Well, that, we still need to figure that part out.
I mean, it could be combined, the two.
I just totally lost my train of thought.
That's a great idea. Maybe we invite the Select Board to a joint meeting and...
Later in the year.
Advertise it to the community that, that we're doing that, and maybe use a portion of that for some public feedback at the beginning.
What I was going to say was advertising.
Yes.
How are we going to use, and this would be more of a subcommittee discussion, how are we going to use social media and, you know, to get the word out? Because that's really our best way for, Michael.
I'm pointing, we're going to designate Michael to handle it.
Michael will be the...
That's fine.
Social media designate.
No, I'm happy, happy to do that. I, I think this is a great approach.
You're the guru.
I'm the guru.
You're the social media guru.
The millennial on the board.
I designate you.
I think this, no, I think, I think involving the public is really, was a real failure that we, you know, the last time we went out and did this. We, I think these forums are a great idea, and I do agree, Stephanie, that they should go before we go to the Board, the Select Board.
Okay.
But I can't, I mean, I don't want to be sort of like the negative person here and say that, like, it's all long good. Because I think, though, it's very effective to get people and to demonstrate that they're supportive. We want to be showing, not telling people that, you know, these buildings need help, and we want to be showing the Select Board that, you know, the community's with us. But we need to make sure that, and John has said this for years, and I used to think it was kind of funny when he'd say it, but I, I agree with him now, that people know we have middle schools. Because middle schools don't really have a constituency. A few of you here have middle schoolers, but your kids are there for three years, they go from a nice school at Center or Blueberry, Wolf Swamp, to a beautiful high school. And, you know, part of, a lot of people are like, ah, they can survive it. You know, we, there's not a constituency the way that there is for an elementary school because you don't spend six years in, at Williams. And there's not a constituency for the high school because it's not a gathering place for the community. So we need to really delve deep and do more than just forums if we're interested in getting the community, you know, brought along. We need to do like a full-on, you know, PR blitz, we need to do propaganda, we need to really convince people. But at the end of the day, we also need to put the pressure on the Select Board. It can't just be that the community's with us because the buck stops with them. And I remember sitting at meetings when, if, had it not been for Bobby Barquette and Rob Auseltine being on the Select Board, then the project, the SOIs wouldn't have moved forward. If there were, there are no allies, we don't have allies on the Select Board the way we used to. They don't exist. We don't have parents of young children anymore. Tom LaCuce is the only one. So there's no, they don't owe us anything, especially at the same time that they're being confronted with a DPW, and especially at the same time that they've got seniors coming down, you know, the path, telling them they want to take over Bliss Park. So we need to, like, put the pressure on them. That's the end goal. I mean, bringing the community along is great, and, but, I mean, we're not talking about having a feasibility study approved, we're not talking about having building, having buildings bonded for, we're talking about having the five members of that Board, three of them, vote in support of sending some paperwork to the state. That's what we want right now. That's the short-term goal. And if they don't understand that there's a willingness and a need from the community, and that we don't articulate our point of view to them and put, and light, like honestly, light a fire underneath them, that's where we're going to lose. We could do all of the public engagement we want, but if the part, if that public engagement lacks sort of our goal, which is not middle school, it's an SOI, then we lost the ballgame.
Yeah, I agree with a lot of that, but I think, but I think at the end of the day, as a town, if we just stepped back and said, and I'm not saying slow down, because I know they've been working on this forever, but if we just stepped back and look at, you know, go to one middle school, Senior Center could be at Glenbrook, you know, as you pointed out in your letter, no park would be affected. You know, is that a potential plan? Maybe. I mean, I think we should be hiring as a town, probably a town planner, to come in and look at our town. We have very little space anyway, it's not going to be a real difficult plan, and figure out what, like, makes sense over the next 30 years. And maybe that does delay, you know, we can't go rushing out to town meeting this, this fall and be voting on projects, and that would include the middle school. And to be honest, as personally, I'd rather actually wait until the town did step back and figured out what we're going to do as a town, even including the middle school, even if it delays it. That would make more sense to me than what's happening now. So if, I guess to answer the question that was posed to you, if somebody wanted my support, I would need to see a plan. If I saw a plan, then maybe I'd support something. If I didn't see a plan, it's hard for me to even support any of the projects at the moment.
Well, isn't the question before us, not really, should, are we going to go ahead with, you know, Stephanie thinks we should do forums? And we could do forums independent of them. I just suggested going before the Select Board to let them know we're doing forums, so that we're transparent, we're not pulling anything on them.
I think we should invite them. I want them there.
So what do you want to do first?
I think we send them a YouTube link with this segment of this meeting queued up so they know we're doing forums and save everybody some time.
So I think as a subcommittee, we'd just like you to approve this basic approach that we laid out, and probably adding a joint meeting of the Board. It's just...
You want us to vote, do you want a motion?
I think that's a good idea.
And let's add, let's add, you know, designating a school committee meeting, designating a portion of a school committee meeting to, to this issue.
And we can just say, invite the Select Board to have a, so with those two.
Yep. And I think that's a great approach.
Just want to make sure, Diane, well, maybe this will come out as a motion, but you're talking about designating a school committee meeting where you would invite the Select Board. Is that what I heard or no? The, the school committee meeting you're designating, is that?
I think we're designating school time on our agenda to discuss the middle school issue. We would extend the invitation to the public and include the Select Board in that invitation.
But you're saying a separate joint meeting.
That was a different, that was a separate item, the joint meeting proposal.
Okay. The invitation I was talking about was inviting them to the forums.
Right, and we, I think we would definitely reach out to them.
So this is separate than the forums, the portion about the school committee meeting? So we're going to do forums, we're going to do a portion of the school committee meeting?
So it sounds like two forums, a portion of the school committee would be designated for the public to come in and talk to us about the middle school, and then a joint meeting of the Board. So five different steps.
Do we need the school committee and the public forums? Do we need both of those? Are they really going to show up twice? That's three. That's three.
Well, you could just do an extended public comment period of, you know.
And just to clarify, these were just
If they show up, if they don't show up, we just start a regular meeting. I just start a meeting, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah.
The start of a meeting, they can come in and talk, or?
But they could come in anytime.
Yeah, I just think if
I think this is just send an email and say, this particular meeting, we're kind of looking for you to come in.
Yeah.
No, I think it's fine. I just don't want to water down the forum, was all I was thinking of, is you want to get a concentrated pool.
Yeah.
And these were just two short-term actions that we were taking. It's not like we wouldn't want to do more. It was just two initial public forums, and to go and present in front of them, and we sort of wanted to make sure the committee was okay with that before moving ahead.
Okay.
So.
So I still want to go back to the joint meeting question about October 5th, which is the joint meeting that we have scheduled with the select board, and whether we want to add the middle, the facilities discussion to, or, or at least propose that we add the facilities discussion to that meeting.
Is everyone supposed to be at that 5th meeting? I keep hearing this date, but it's news.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do I have the date correct? I hope I do.
Yes, yeah, it's joint meeting.
I, I double-checked it before the meeting. It's Wednesday, October 5th at 6:00 PM.
Seven.
Seven. It's posted already, correct, or not?
I did post it, because
Is it seven?
Okay. We, yeah, we had scheduled it for, I had told Marie six.
Yeah, she, they posted for seven.
Oh, they posted it for seven.
So I posted you for seven.
Can I just ask that, if, when these are scheduled, I don't know how people found out, but I'm just hearing now, so if it's scheduled on the calendar, I don't get an alert that this, where we have it. So I don't know how this information is, but I, I just want to make sure I don't miss anything, so.
Yeah, I think what happened was we sent out a calendar to everybody, but we may not have sent out a final, this is what the date is. Did, did, did anybody get an email that said, this is our final joint?
I don't know.
Okay.
I remember seeing emails, but I don't know if I went to everybody or not.
Okay.
So it's October 5th.
October 5th.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Is it seven?
Yes.
Well, right now it's at seven.
If I could, for clarification.
Yeah.
You're proposing at this October 5th meeting, we talked about all of the issues that the school committee is concerned with, vis-à-vis the select board. So, so we're going to talk about everything?
I'm not
Not just the SOI, not just the middle school.
Well, right now, that's just budget. The October 5th meeting is just budget, I mean.
Okay.
I'm not proposing that we add a facilities discussion. I'm saying that we need, we should discuss whether we'd like to propose it or not. Because the understanding of the select board is that that is only a budget discussion. So if anybody has thoughts on, on that meeting, if not, you know, we'll keep it the way it is, just it's posted as a budget discussion. Michelle?
I, I'm going to suggest, or I, I think I would prefer holding off on discussing the middle schools until after the forums, which would be, I think, the 18th and the 19th.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
So let's get some feedback from the public, and then
Okay.
So in terms of the language on the recommendation of them that we have here, we could say, add a later date, invite, you know, or something. Invite, or just leave that undefined as when.
Yeah, we don't have
But I think let's, yeah, okay.
We don't have to include it. So you, you do want a motion, though, on that?
I think so, yeah, yeah, I think that would be
Do we have the language?
So what are we adding to what's already existing?
Joint meeting of the board, and designating a portion of the school committee meeting specifically for input. I mean, people can provide at every meeting, like, those are the two.
Yep. And as long as everyone has a general understanding of that, Michelle, you can put together the language, we can still approve it tonight. Is everyone comfortable with that plan?
I'm going to cancel the third of October.
Third is
That is still when
Well, that's what our recommendation was. We're going to cancel that.
No, no, they're going to the select, the, the subcommittee's going to the select board on the third for a very brief presentation.
Including you, if you forgot.
Just, just subcommittee.
Right, the three of us, right. And then the fifth will be meeting again, but that will be
The joint, that's a joint.
As a school committee, and, right, about the budget.
Are you comfortable with that? You were proposing the forums first.
No, yes, but Michelle clarified what they're talking about on the third.
Okay.
And the forums would also be the subcommittee and Marty, probably. Everybody could attend, but the actual presentation would be the subcommittee and Marty's, the way we were thinking of doing it, at least.
Right, and I, I think Diane was going to post, just in case, but I, if anybody can come, I think it would be nice to show support and show that we're behind
That's what I was going to say.
These forums, yeah. So if, I know it's tough with schedules and everything, to, the two that, that I had down, or that, one of which I'm recommending a change to, but was October 18th at 9:00 AM.
At Williams.
At Williams. And October 19th at 7:00 PM at Glenbrook.
What, what time at Glenbrook?
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM.
Okay. That could get a little tricky with having one in the morning and one in the evening.
In terms of
Working, you know, working parents.
Well, they're not, they're going to be repeats of each other. So granted, one is
Just at different venues, okay.
Exactly, so, so that we could get, you know, people from both.
I get it, yep, okay.
They will, just to clarify, they will be the exact same presentation, just at a different site.
Okay.
Do we want to do any kind of publicity to try and generate an audience, or participants?
I think it would be excellent if the subcommittee has time to meet and invite Mr. Clark, who I bet would have some fantastic ideas on that. Since we dubbed him
Yeah, I can, I can take care of the, sort of the promotion of those two forums.
The forums.
Yeah.
We'll send out an email to the school community.
Yes. Yeah, and, and, and put a notice to the reminder, Long Meadow News.
Yeah, and the seniors.
What we should do, in addition to a press release, would be for the members of the middle school working group, and/or the superintendent and the chair, to actually just sit down with the reporters and do a one-on-one, rather than just getting them to the forum. I mean, the forum's there to add color to the story, but I think ultimately, talk to them, have an actual article written about what the plan is, and, you know, our plan for public engagement, and why this is important. Use the opportunity for an interview to articulate to them, you know, what is this? So, you know, the all right one. Long Meadow News is tricky these days, because nobody knows who's doing what, but
Okay, okay.
So, yeah, I mean, all sorts of PR, I think, to get this out there. But again, we didn't want to do anything until we had the full school committee's approval.
I can also help with pitches.
That would be great.
We should invite, you know, for selectmen and finance, all the relevant boards
I have a finance.
in the town.
Okay, so I think if everyone's comfortable with making a motion to accept the proposal of the middle school working group, and Michelle, you'll just put together the specific language for Diane.
I think everything that's here already.
Diane, you have it? Okay? Oh, okay, great.
Just one question, I was just thinking about if you're moving forward with the announcement is space. So it's during the school, at Williams, at 9:00, just making sure that the auditorium or the library is not occupied. I don't know what this schedule is.
Yeah, I got to think that through, I got to, I got to talk that through with Principal Ry, and just see, I got to see if that, how the logistics of that, and
Yeah, if you could let us know tomorrow, just, because we should be posting this thing now.
ASAP, good.
So I would like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the middle school working group as presented, along with the two additions that we said, hey, designate a portion of the school committee meeting for input, of a future school committee meeting for input, and to ask the select board for a joint meeting to discuss the middle schools.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for all of your work in putting this together. Really appreciate it. I think we have a good start to this year. I really do. And I'm looking forward to the forums.
Sure. I don't know, I might go off script.
So policy subcommittee, we do not have a report tonight.
Right, rescheduled.
Okay, so we have the school goal, uh, school committee goals next on the agenda. And as I started to say earlier, for those of you who are watching this meeting, we had an off-camera retreat, which the school committee does every year. I think there might have been a little bit of confusion on behalf of the public about our last meeting, because it wasn't televised. But just to be clear, we had our retreat, and we did start talking about goals for this school year. We came up with a lot of ideas, and Liz, and myself, and Sue sat down, and we tried to put it into a grid. So we have it for you.
Marty, do you have the quicker for the
Oh, yeah.
So for people who are watching at home, this is really a continuation of a discussion that's already been started. We're trying, the school committee, every year comes up with goals, things that we want to prioritize, that we want to accomplish in any given school year. Not the typical sorts of things that we do every year that are part, part of our job, but things maybe outside the norm that we really want to prioritize in this school year. So this grid that you're about to see are, is a, is a combination of everyone's ideas about what we want to accomplish this year, what we want to set out to accomplish, and how we want to do it. So it's a draft, and what we did, I think everybody submitted kind of what they felt were important items to work on this year as a school committee, and what the smaller group did was kind of break those tasks and items into categories that kind of made sense, and looked at the things that showed up most, and came up with some overarching ideas that school committee may or may not want to consider as goals for this year, but that's up for full school committee debate, so. No. Jess, you want me to talk to the goals?
Yeah, that would be
Okay. Do you want to start, and then?
Sure, yep. Something that came up often was a communication, and I think that school committee feels like it would, it's important to communicate effectively with all stakeholders on important school committee topics. You had that discussion tonight a little bit about the forums. It's something that shows up again and again. So a goal could be something like to develop a structure for ongoing communication of important school committee information. Communication will come from school committee to town residents in the following formats. That's up to you to decide how you best want to communicate with your constituents, and, you know, the stakeholders that, that have been listed are potentially just some of them that are there, but, I don't know, did you want to discuss it goal by goal, Jess, or do you want some time to take a look at it and come back again?
I think, you know what, I think it would be great if you don't mind just continuing to go through the goals, and then we can come back and talk about the document as a whole.
Sure.
If you don't mind. No, thank you, Sue.
The, the next category that school committee, that showed up a lot, whereas, we talked about it a lot tonight, was middle school building improvement. And I think that's a really worthy goal, and I won't ask my opinion, but to effectively present to the town boards the solution to the middle school physical space challenges, basically, is the goal. And we talked about determining whether or not to submit an SOI, and how to get interest from the community, and so that's one thing that showed up again and again from many of you. Homework isn't necessarily a goal, we talked about that quite a bit, but just kind of encouraging our administration to take a look at homework and best practice around that. And I know that the superintendent has already led some discussion on that, so that was one area that came up quite a bit. Health and wellness, to provide an environment in which all students feel safe, healthy, and emotionally available to learn. And I think that has to do with kind of taking a look at the wellness policy and updating that from pre-K through 12, through working groups and research, as it relates to, to some things, like recess and lunch and snack and school start times that folks wanted to explore. Lots of folks could be on that committee as well. I think there's a requirement for that committee from different constituents. And then facilities and ground maintenance was to ensure that all buildings are maintained in good condition. And I think, Jess, correct me if I'm wrong, but that was kind of creating an ongoing long-term plan for
Yep.
monitoring the, the kind of health and wellness of the buildings and the grounds themselves. Kind of watering the trees before they die.
Yes.
You know?
Yes.
Student achievement was to continue that all students achieve at high levels, and along those lines, looking at the expansion of an advanced learning program at elementary and middle. There was some talk about expanding course choices, maybe at the middle school and the high school, or at least looking at that with administrators and see if that's something that, that they might be interested, or felt that was necessary. And that's it. And then there were other things that just kind of were school committee tasks, and there's a longer list than this, but scheduling regular reports from pupil services and technology and curriculum, reviewing school choice and MECO participation, like superintendent goal-setting and evaluation, budget review and approval, and exploring alternative sources of funding, including public and private grants, were some of the things that came up on just kind of like a task, an ongoing revolving task list, so.
That's the one piece that wasn't on this document, the task list.
Yeah, that's good, I just wrote it. It, it was on your document initially, this, this document, and so we didn't
I knew there was something
We didn't include it, right?
Yeah.
So it was kind of popping up as you were talking about things tonight.
Yeah, so on, so we had on the task list, we used, yeah, we used the task list, so to back up for a second, thank you.
Sure.
So we did our best to consolidate everybody's ideas, and Sue was really helpful in, in doing this. But if you are seeing things that, you know, you brought forward that aren't included in this grid, that's what this conversation really is about, making sure that we've, we've captured everything in a way that we can use this document this year. And I, I don't think it's a bad idea, actually, to have the, the additional task category of things that we want to accomplish this year. And if you don't mind just scrolling back down
Yeah, were there other things that you, that you have on your list there that we need to, do you have the list?
I have the list.
Jess has, or you do have it, one of you, I didn't bring it.
I mean, it's just chicken scratch, but I, I know that it was, someone had brought up professional development needs, adequate time for professional development, and planning time for teachers, school council roles, we're just, yeah, looking at the role of school council in policy. And then the tech committee, did you capture that yet?
I think that's up above.
Schedule regular reports.
Um, yeah, schedule with
Yep, schedule regular reports for pupil services, technology, and curriculum. And then enrollment, did you, is that on there?
Um
And, uh, that was on the task list.
Yeah, just regular enrollment updates, right?
Monitoring enrollment and class sizes. And media release forms.
It's kind of a review of media release forms, right?
Yep.
And I have policy.
And grant writing also.
I think I have explore alternative sources of funding, including public and private grants.
Yeah, oh, yep, you have that.
Okay. What, Liz, you said something, sorry.
I was just saying for the media release, is it like a policy thing to review?
John?
Should we have some language here about funding all of this? It's a goal for the school committee to provide adequate funding for the schools. Because that's what we fight about every year with the select board.
Right.
To be frank.
Well, I think what you're talking about maybe would be more about, you know, how can we really connect our goals with the budget discussion more effectively this year? Which is something we've been talking about a little bit.
Well, just to come up with a budget that will address the needs of our students.
Right. Right. And I think what we did was, sorry.
I, John, I think we talked about that being an obligation of the school committee, not necessarily a goal, although it's always a goal, but it's one of the main tasks of school committees, so we weren't sure it actually needed a specific set aside goal. And so you feel it does and that's up for you to discuss.
I spent a lot of time looking online at other schools, other school committees' goals in different districts. And for the most part, they do tend to be specific to that school year, not the ordinary functioning things that we would do anyway. But, you know, really, what do we want to focus on? That would be sort of out of the ordinary course of business this school year. So that's why we decided to do it this way. And it's absolutely within the school committees, you know, we can create our goals in any format that we choose. So we don't have to exclude those, but a lot of school districts do. And then some are a combination.
Historically, the great cleavage on school committees is between the spenders and the thrifties, right? Those who want to expend money.
You're reviewing.
Who argue perhaps a class ratio of 15 to 1 would be superior to a class ratio of 20 to 1. And, you know, that's where you're talking cash, money.
Right.
So if you're reviewing goals, I guess, you know, the ones that get passed by most school committees are those that don't really talk about that one. They talk about the things they can unite on. You follow me?
Yeah.
It's always there, isn't it?
It is, but I think last year we ultimately did come together. Took a while, but we did ultimately come together and our budget passed.
You did.
It was just.
Yep, you did.
I'm not sure how you formulate that now because we don't know exactly what the board's going to tell us they're willing to give us. We don't really even know what we need at the moment. In that joint meeting, will probably be the first time we get all that information. And I'm just not sure how you come up with that. I mean, we have a task, which is budget review and approval, but each of us probably has a different idea of exactly what we're willing to approve. But I don't know that that's a, it's more of a task than a goal really because your goal is going to be different than mine potentially. Hopefully, we get on the same page at the end of the vote.
Oh, Michelle.
Well, I guess I'm thinking that might just kind of fall into the student achievement to continue to ensure that all students achieve at high levels. Maybe we could say that to continue to ensure that our budget addresses, you know, through our budget.
Yeah.
We could just add that so then that's our.
I think it wouldn't, I mean, I think it would be fine to add another line to the grid, budget, and then Liz and Sue and I can meet again and we can come up with language.
Well, even the way Michelle was there, I mean, really, it is, I think John.
Oh, just adding it to student achievement.
That's what he basically said, right? I mean, it's.
Yeah, but I mean, I guess.
Student achievement is based on how much, partially based on how much we can spend to achieve.
But I think now that I'm looking at it, maybe that would water down some of the commitments and goals that we have under that general title, so putting it by itself.
That's my gut feeling about it. It just feels like the budget should be somehow a separate category if we want to include the budget in the grid. Stephanie?
I almost think what John's saying might be something worth thinking about in our mission statement and how we approach things. And the budget is a big part and how it plays in. As far as student achievement, I do have a couple things that I wanted to, I don't know, suggest. One of them is we use, so there's the one category to talking about looking at programming for high achievers, but I'd also, under student achievement, like to throw out the idea of having as a goal to review current special education programming and services at all levels for pre-K through 12. And then the benchmark would be to survey parents and staff. I don't think a survey has gone out in a very long time, if at all. And I'd like to see special ed addressed as well under student achievement. And then another idea for that too, another thought that I'd like to see is to maybe research the implementation or expansion, I don't know, of clubs at the middle school level. I don't know if we have any clubs at the middle school level. And I think when we're talking about ensuring that all students achieve at a high level as our commitment, we need to look at more than one student population. So, you know, one that came to like, you know, was special ed, but I also want to look at some other ones that I think need addressing. One of them was how do you achieve that for all students? And maybe some areas that I'd like to take a look at. Middle school was one in terms of clubs. I don't know that we have any that exist. Do we? I know in.
There's drama.
In East Long Meadow, they have 16 programs, I believe, at the middle school level, including.
I know they have after-school activities. I don't know if they're necessarily clubs.
Yeah, so clubs.
Like there's art and then Liz said there's drama and there.
I think.
There's singing. There's a, what's it called? It's a sit-down.
A lot of our enrichment programs are, you have to pay for, at least at the elementary level. I think it's worth looking at when you're, when you're talking about student achievement and what we're doing, in what we're doing to help students that aren't involved in sports and want to be involved in, I mean, there's so many benefits to clubs. And I, I feel like when you talk about student achievement, that's one area that maybe we have a lot going on at the high school and clubs and we see the benefits from it, but we're kind of missing this middle school.
Kathy Rizotto just texted me and said we have tons of school, tons of clubs at the middle school.
Oh, we do. I don't know how.
Did you have her text us the list?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know how.
She's, she's watching.
Okay, that's good.
Kathy, please text us.
That's great to hear. I'd love to hear because the, it was a question I kind of threw out to some middle schoolers and I didn't hear any.
Maybe they're not as aware of it and that could be.
Maybe, you know, I know there's jazz band and then I'm hearing about singing, but some of these, I know there's robotics.
Sports.
There's a Lego thing at the elementary, but it's outside and you have to pay for. I just, I like to hear. So if it's there, then maybe that's something we can look at what's there and.
Okay.
Maybe expanding it more, maybe it doesn't need to be, maybe it just needs to be publicized. I don't know.
Russ?
So we just, under student achievement, under the goal, we have the advanced learning program. You just want to add another bullet, which would be special ed, the way you described it, and then add under benchmark, the language you just stated. I mean, that's.
Yeah, and then maybe look into the club. I mean, if it doesn't need to be there, then it doesn't need to be there.
I think it needs more publicized.
Maybe that's it.
Then there aren't a lot of clubs.
Maybe that one should go under tasks instead of a goal, put it under tasks.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I think I'd like the opportunity just to learn more myself.
Yeah.
Before we, before we jump ahead and make it a goal of the committee, let's gather some information to find out exactly what's happening at the middle level after school. I'm guessing that it's active and that there's opportunities, but in what way, shape, form, how it's advertised, I don't know.
Right.
I'd love the opportunity to, if that's something the committee's interested in, I can bring you back some information on that.
That's why that category, tasks slash maybe issues to explore further is good for that reason. Marty, what?
I was just going to say, even in terms of the special education survey, I know with some of the grants, there are requirements to do some parent involvement surveys and that kind of thing. So some of that may exist as well. And again, I think that's something I can, I can look into, but.
But as far as a goal, I think it makes sense to, if we're going to do, if we're looking to do advanced programming, another goal dealing with special ed probably makes sense to do that on its own.
Okay.
I mean, that's my opinion.
Yeah. Is there some sense that there is special education programming that, I mean, certainly it's divided, decided on an individual student basis and so that, you know, we've got that legal commitment to provide
Right.
services that are appropriate for children and it would be, I would say, wouldn't be right for us to sit here and say, we should expand special education program and contract it, or add this program, or take away that program because.
No, I think it would be more.
Review it.
Basically by getting that review from the current programming and services from a parent, you know, to get that input from the parent.
So you understand, yeah.
There's also the MCAS scores. I mean, we get those every year. I think it's a question of how do we ensure that the kids, you know, that we're making sure that everybody's accessing the education the way they should. Now, I know, and I know we do a good job generally. It's not, it's just a question of like, you know, when we get their scores every year, it kind of shows that we could improve in some of those areas. And so I think we have an obligation to figure out how we can do that, not child by child, but kind of globally.
Yeah, and I think, I noticed that Sue had said a regular report for pupil services, that would be part of it. We talked about an assessment report, so you kind of put all that together and figure out how can we make sure we're supporting special education students to make sure that they're, you know, accessing everything that they, they need to achieve at the highest levels possible, so.
And I think there's, we talked at the end of last year, there's room for improvement because, you know, we just switched administrators and I think we have a new person. You know, Jean's going to be looking at the program differently and so there may be things that, we have a goal and she can help us, you know, improve the program and explain ways where we can do that.
So should we go back to the top and is everyone good with the communication one? Just so we can get through this and, yeah, we just. Knock it out, we need the formats. We had for benchmarks, it says communication will come from school committee to town residents in the following formats. So we just need to finish that sentence. Hang on, sorry.
Whoa.
No, no, no.
Do we have to describe it?
No, I don't think we have to.
Communication. I mean, basically, we want to improve, it's not so much the amount, I don't think it's quality.
Yeah.
Which has been very good lately.
Is there a way to, I'm sorry, is there a way to somehow look at the website and the way we're presenting information? So for example, you didn't know that there was clubs at Williams. Maybe we can make sure that's on the webpage. I think there's been a few times already this year where people have said, well, we don't have that. Why don't we have that? And we do, we just don't have it on the website in a way that people can find it.
Mm-hmm.
So that's a big project. I just, so maybe, I don't know, but it's been a theme, I think.
We should catalog all the things we don't know about.
I'm basically okay with the chart. If you can add special ed as a goal.
I just, I, I don't, I get confused about kind of school committee's role in curriculum and I, I understand it to be that you kind of look at new curriculums, but ongoing curriculums, you support the person in the role to do that kind of stuff? I don't know, you can straighten me out, Russ.
I don't think that's what Stephanie's talking about.
So I just kind of wrote to support the PS director and a program review? I don't know.
I don't think, I think when you have to continue to ensure that all students achieve at high levels and you're researching the expansion of advanced learning, that to me is curriculum. Mine is the special ed that I suggested is just reviewing current special ed programming and services with the idea that you would survey parents and maybe staff. So it's not specific to, you know, looking at different, it's more looking at the parent or receiving the parent perspective. I think when you're looking at, I'm trying to think, it's not so much looking at the curriculum, but I think it's an important piece when we are looking at student achievement to hear from parents.
Yeah, we did, Michael, if I remember correctly, and you know, you're being quiet over there, but there was a big special education year, I don't know how many, two or three years ago now, where we had parents, there was a forum, Stephanie. You were there, were you there?
I wasn't there, but I.
There was a forum where they had Q and A and they were able to talk about what their challenges were with special education. There was even a couple supporters here and there. So that was a, you know, one way.
Yeah, I remember that was, that was, yeah, that was fun for you.
It was fun for me.
In my mind, what you wrote there with parent input or something would, really what I would expect is Jean this year is going to look at the program. She's new as far as running the program. And she's going to come to us throughout the year and tell us, we could do this better, you know, the budget should change here because if we added this program, we could actually save money or have better outcomes or, you know, whatever it is. I think I'd like to have more kind of regular input or Jean coming to some of our meetings to tell us what, what she thinks could be changed or what could be done better, what could be better for kids that are more efficient. I think since we have somebody new, we should take advantage of somebody new looking at the program and telling us, because maybe we need to change our budget, but we need to know that early on so we can deal with it.
Right.
Yeah, I think, I think if the plan would be to have Jean Fontaine come to do a report to the school committee, you can be very specific in the questions that you have in advance and we can make sure that she addresses those and.
But I think what I'm stuck on is why is it okay to research the expansion of advanced learning on a curriculum level, but I'm getting the pushback on the special ed? What I'm wondering is, it is to support the programming, but we're missing the parent piece. So I.
I put it up. You have to turn around.
So that's the, that's how I felt like we could support student achievement by playing that one role and getting some parent input. And it's not, I mean, there's a lot of good feedback. It's not like you're just looking for negative. I mean, there's, there's a lot of feedback, I think, that's important for us to hear and to pass along.
Didn't we do the surveys a couple years ago, Michael? What was it, Jessica? Can't remember, it was a forum.
We did a forum.
We definitely did a survey when we had, what was the company that came in town?
District and Community Partners.
DCP.
DCP.
Yeah, there was a big survey, but that's so long ago now, so.
But both of these topics are really, our role is the budget side of it. So this is going to happen, you know, using our administrators. It's going to come back to us and we're going to figure out in the budget, can we make changes that need to be made to make things better or not? I mean, that's what I think is this goal really ultimately.
Yeah, because there could be programming that's really working and you want to hear about that and you know that that's vital. And then there's programming that maybe needs tweaking or services that are not. It's, it's one of the ways I think that we can help support pupil services and, and hear from parents as to what's working, what maybe needs change.
Separate goal or under student achievement?
So this was, I was just thinking in terms of student achievement. How can we support student achievement? And we had one population, I thought, you know what, I think this other population. And then I thought, you know.
I just want to add, I definitely mentioned advanced learning program in my goals because there really isn't a budget set aside for that. We haven't had a formal advanced learning program. So in my writing that down as my goal, it was, let's look at ways to, I think right now it's, it's on the teachers to provide for all the levels and therefore including the advanced learners. But can we find a way to support it through our budget or look at how other districts do it? So categorized under student achievement, then, you know, that's where that came from. Maybe we.
There's really a connection in one sense. I mean, you want to make sure we have adequate programming to meet the individual needs of all students, whether they're, you know, the advanced learners or students who have identified disabilities and so that, it's the same goal really is, you know, do we have resources and programming and staffing and personnel in place to support all learners? And that's, that's really the key in whether. So I think you can keep it the way Sue has presented it or you could consolidate it to say, you know, to kind of bring more, you know, to bring the two statements together if you wanted. But if you kept it that way, I think that's okay too, in my, in my view.
It almost touches on John's mention, like the words that you just used and developed what John was saying, that the budget ensures that.
Budget, staffing, professional development adequacy to make sure that you can meet the needs of all learners.
Russ? Russ.
So I'd make a motion that we accept the goals as presented.
Did you want to talk about the homework piece in it in the room or are we good?
Yeah.
I know that was something.
Add something.
Well, he can make the motion if we have a second, then we can just continue the discussion in a second. Okay. All those in, oh, sorry, discussion.
For the health and wellness, I, I don't know if we forgot or if we just didn't do it, but we didn't put like a, the social emotional curriculum, which is something that is part of the budget that we wanted to do last year.
I thought we had that somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, is it on your task list?
No.
That's really strange.
Is that what you were supposed to?
At least that's like something tangible that we could put on there.
Yeah. That's a big, that's a big one.
That's already in place, really, and just needs money for it.
Yep, that's a big one. And then maybe up, up under the middle school building improvement, I would say, I like the word, to effectively present, the commitment to effectively present to the town boards a solution to the middle school facilities issues, or facilities issues rather than physical space challenges. I don't know, I just, is that language, does that capture, I think, the middle school?
Facility needs, facility challenges, either or.
Yeah, effectively, the middle school facility needs, yeah, I like needs, needs. And then I would get rid of the language based on our discussion tonight where it says, determine whether to prepare, just prepare a statement of interest. That would be our goal. Prepare a statement of interest for submission for core program or accelerated repair. And I don't think we need to say to, for both, to both middle schools because that's understood. Is the middle school working group comfortable with the rest of the pieces in that line item? Do you want to tweak any of the wording there?
Well, instead of a solution, I think we should say a plan.
What, where's it, where's it say?
To effectively present to the town boards a solution to the middle school?
Wait, what does it say? Oh, yeah.
It's really.
No, I agree. To effectively.
We need to present some type of plan to them.
A plan.
Plan to what?
Yes, a plan for the.
To address the middle school needs.
To address the middle school facilities needs. Yes, okay. Okay, that one seems like it's complete. Does anyone else have any other input on that line? Middle school. So the homework, we were going back and forth a little bit in subcommittee about whether this should be in a separate line item. I was advocating that it should, you know, as I said, this is our document, it's a school committee document, we can determine if we want it to be in a separate line item. I thought there was, I, my understanding is that there's strong interest in the community and on the school committee to really look at homework this year and talk about it. So I thought it would be good to separate it out. We initially had it under our health and wellness line item.
I just didn't know if you wanted it to be a task or a goal.
So, and then I liked this language that we came up with, to provide a platform for homework discuss, well, let's see, to provide a platform for discussion regarding homework. Discussion regarding homework. And then to facilitate, excuse me, to facilitate a dialogue on homework best practice. Consider the following, a district-wide, district-wide philosophy, survey, school council, I guess you could say, school council participation, forums, admin study group. Those are more ideas than benchmarks, I guess, but. And the stakeholders, students, teachers, parents, administrators.
Were you forgetting anybody?
You know, under stakeholder, shouldn't we have students in every group?
Yeah.
Ultimately, that's.
Yeah, I think we do.
You know, it's like we had a student appear tonight.
Hopefully we do, except.
Except for facilities and grounds, we don't have them in there.
Well, no, well.
But, yeah.
We want student input on.
I agree, no, that's a really.
The condition of the field.
That's a good point, John. Yeah, let's add students to all. Very, very good point. And then health and wellness, to, to, so to provide an environment in which all students feel safe, healthy and emotionally available to learn. I, I almost love that. I just feel like, I feel like the language needs to be tweaked a little bit. We can certainly go back if the committee would prefer and we can, you know, tweak this language a little bit. But I do think it's good to go through it now, at least generally, to make sure people are comfortable with the general language, in which all students feel safe, healthy, I don't know. Does anyone have any ideas of how to reframe that second part?
I, I might focus on the environment that you're trying to provide as opposed to the outcome, you know, so.
The feeling, yeah.
Safe and emotionally supportive, safe, healthy and emotionally supportive environment.
Yes, love it.
In which all students are, are able to learn.
You nailed it, thank you, Marty. That's great, I like that. And then by April, complete a study and update the wellness policy pre K through 12. Create working groups, research best practice as it relates to recess, lunch, school start times. I would propose, if the committee's comfortable, I would like to put high school start time and in parents, consider creating a working group to look at the high school start time. This is something a lot of communities are doing. I thought it was really interesting that Newton, last year, actually had it as a separate goal, all on its own, was to explore the later high school start time. So, you know, I think it's something to consider and discuss potentially at a meeting at some point, if the committee's comfortable with that. And then I think we have everybody, we just need to add students to that stakeholder list, right?
Their last.
We got that?
Yeah.
Counselors and students, oh, you put it up there. I'm looking at my documents, sorry, Sue.
No, that's no problem.
Okay. If I am going too fast, please stop me. Facilities and ground maintenance to ensure that all buildings are proper, I tweaked this language to ensure that all buildings are properly maintained. What do you think about, Marty?
Good though.
Create a procedure for monitoring ongoing maintenance of grounds and buildings, create a working group, have everybody in there, you added students, yes. Yep. Good. Student achievement, we covered. I think that's it.
So under commitment, and there was just one.
Yeah.
Almost, it got repetitive commitment on the one relating to, up one, health and wellness.
Yep.
To provide a.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, so I think you got a few extra words in there. Okay.
Want that one? We'll get right to fun.
So you're going to eliminate from the word and up to, up to feel. And through feel. Getting punchy here.
Are you noticing that? I wasn't going to say that loud.
A safe, healthy, emotionally supportive.
Wasn't one of the goals going to be to keep the meetings to two hours?
I have been watching that clock all night. It's Michael's fault.
Got to get the capital done.
It's not really your fault, Michael. Stephanie.
Under student achievement, I actually, I like Sue how you did that. And I'm wondering if we might add not just the people's services director, but also for regular ed too, if we do, you know, an internal review of curriculum and if we should add that as well, I don't know. You know, and when we're looking at student achievement, so the way she has it worded, to support the people's services director and an internal program review, does that happen at the district-wide level?
I'd say yes and on an ongoing basis.
So we have, well, we are always talking about surveys and sending them out to parents to, for certain things. When we're talking about achievement, would, and, and we're talking about trying to reach every student, both, you know, on, on all spectrums, do we want to, is that something that would, I don't know, that we're interested in doing for all? Or is it just these identified ones that we want to look at specifically? I don't know. Maybe it is, just. Do we feel like a survey would, I mean, how often is a review done at a district-wide level? I mean, I would imagine it's continuous.
Continuous, yeah, I'd, I'd say so. And I think we can't forget the opportunities for feedback that we have in place, school councils, PTOs, PTAs, you know, set the high school pack.
And then we're increasing communication too. So maybe just the two identified that maybe we could help out with. Okay.
So you made the motion.
Yeah, my new motion is accept this chart.
The only, the only, the only thing is, I think we can, we can approve it, but I do, I would like to send out the final draft to everybody just to make sure that it's okay.
I think that's a good idea.
I think it's okay to, pardon?
So you're going to approve it as amended?
As amended. And then if there are any issues or anybody has any concerns about the document when they get it in their, in their inbox, we can amend it at the next meeting, okay?
Can I just say one thing about the tasks? And do we, when we get that, we don't need to discuss it in length now, but I do think it had been brought up before, do we want to include things, things in the task that are just part of our normal operating procedures? So budget review and approval, we have to do. Do we need that as a task? Superintendent goal setting and evaluation, that's something we have to do.
I mean, it's not harmful to have them in there, but we don't.
I just don't want to water down the task, the things that we do procedurally anyway.
And you have a, the sort of beginnings of a standing task list. Diane has put together a spreadsheet with, you know, a series of tasks that have to take place at certain stages in the year. So they're placeholders that are task oriented. Some of those things I think are already on there.
But it's great to have that.
Yeah, I think it's.
Punch list. You know, we can refer to it.
I don't think there's any harm, I think it's helpful potentially to keep it there.
You're looking at. You're looking at, more than the goals, the task list was just something that we talked about. I, maybe we should probably separate those on two different documents.
No, I think it's fine to have it at the bottom.
Just making sure.
Yeah, I think it's fine, I really do. I think it works, it works for us.
Okay. Works for us.
It works for us, make it work, people. All right, so.
I shared it, everybody has it?
Thank you, Sue.
Okay.
Thank you. We're, we're ready to vote then. Yes?
Yes, I just want to say thank you. Because this was really impressive when I saw it, based on our last meeting and how many, I mean, what was up there. So when I saw this, I was really impressed. So I want to say thank you because this had to have taken a ton.
I think we were all shocked at how much we got done in a short period of time. But Sue, I really thank you so much for taking a leadership role on this and really helping us. Okay, all those in favor? Repose, okay, thank you.
Can I throw a quick footnote on, with regard to the clubs and activities?
Under the students tab on each of the middle schools, there's a listing of the clubs and
activities at the middle school. So.
Thanks.
There's, there, it may be something that we need to expand upon, but there is a listing that's there of about nine or 10 or 11 clubs at, at each school. One of, one of which is a catch-all for intramurals in a variety of sports, so. And it could be that we just need to make sure that that's known.
Okay, I am looking at our agenda. I don't, we have a couple more, we have. How long is the municipal modernization act going to take?
One minute.
No, it's not just voting on that. That's what I thought.
And the charter school, that should be a minute.
Okay, so.
I'm going to make you do the warrants.
Okay, so let's just move right along here, folks. So the homework guidelines are in front of us. This has been an issue with the school councils in terms of, do they incorporate the new homework guidelines? Do they not incorporate them? There's a lot of confusion. I'm really hoping that this discussion will help to clarify how we're going to move forward this year regarding.
Is it supposed to be in the packet?
Are we supposed to have something?
You do not have a copy in your packet. I, I have a copy that I can, is it still on the website, Marty?
It is, well, actually, we took it off the front page. I don't know if it was relocated, it may not have been relocated because it.
Oh, yeah.
It's been sort of subject to review and.
Yeah.
It was not in your packet.
No, it wasn't.
But the question before us tonight is simply, there's already homework guidelines in the handbooks, right? So this is whether to put the new homework guidelines into the handbooks.
Right, right. And I think what really, exactly, so really what I wanted to do was check in with Marty. We had raised this issue at a previous meeting and he was going to check in with the, during his administrator, administrator's meeting and have a, and more in-depth discussion and report back to us. So that's the purpose of having it on the agenda. And while he's talking, I will, I can, if anybody wants to look at the old, or look at these, I have them available.
How do you going to send you a link to them?
Okay, thanks, Diane.
Can I take a, give you some feedback on what I've heard?
Please, yeah, thanks, Marty.
So we, we've been at the homework guidelines for about a year and the feedback I've gotten from this committee, from the administrative team, is that we need to take a, a hard look at that to the point where my recommendation would be that we not incorporate those guidelines into the handbook staff will be coming to you for review. I think there is a strong enough interest amongst the administrative team and certainly from this committee to take another look at those guidelines. The, I've already asked the principals to begin discussions with their school councils. We think that's a good body to turn to, to get some feedback on those guidelines. School councils are, you know, they hold public meetings of teachers and, and parents and administrators. And so I, I think generally the, the thought that seems to be coming together is that it would, it, it makes sense for us to have an, an agreed-upon approach and agreed-upon philosophy. And the administrative team has already indicated to me that they would like to spend some time on that over the course of this year to try to put together some document that we can all agree to make sense. And I think there's a, a strong interest in making sure it's, it's a document that's built up from the, from the, from the bottom floor, that it's a grassroots discussion. And that's something that, that's a discussion I'm eager to have. And so, you know, I think right now, teachers are trying to work within the letter of the homework guidelines, but they also are trying to do what's right for, you know, children and make sure that the homework expectations are individualized and, and, you know, relate to the unique needs of every child. So I would say, you know, that we, we should kind of continue down this path, that we should not put those homework guidelines in the handbooks because there is definitely enough interest in reviewing that document. Again, with the end goal being a, an agreed-upon philosophy, a vision, set of guiding principles, you know, sort of pick your phrase, but something along those lines that, that can, that we can really buy into as a learning community.
Russ.
So I like that approach. I guess the question would be, does that, so for teachers, practically speaking, would they go back to the student handbook? What's in the student handbook right now? Is that what they should follow?
I'd hate to put Sue on the spot. I, I don't know if, if anybody can give me some history on what, what existed prior to the current guidelines, you know, but I, I would say that they certainly would get some guidance from.
Guidelines, like 10 minutes of homework a night by, per grade level. I think there was some kind of language around that, that it was, it was pretty loose. Yeah, it was pretty loose. So we kind of went to a tighter policy. We always talk about kind of loose tight things in education and this policy seems, or these guidelines almost seem too tight, you know? So I think part of it is getting admin on board and educated about what we really feel about homework and then educating the staff on top of that before we really create. So they're looking at, yeah.
So what would the message to staff be then after our meeting, if we go this way? Would it simply be, you're going to go back to what you were doing before the guidelines until we give you further guidance? We're going to include you in the discussion? Because really, I want to see, you know, it should be the teachers, you know, with parents and school councils are a great way to do it because everybody's on it. I think that makes a lot of sense, although my 10-year-old said, if she was on the committee, you should be asking students.
We should, I would, I would agree with that.
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Particularly, she could take my place anytime she wants. I have my place, too.
I feel like the admin team really wants to hash it out a little more, before we kind of make a statement out to staff about what to, you know, be assigning for homework, or how homework should count, and the pressure that homework brings, I think.
Well, I think in the meantime, though, that the issue is, some teachers are really, they are following it to the letter.
Right.
And it's causing, you know, some issues in some of the grades, because if you follow it to the letter, it's actually quite a bit of homework. And so some kids, the kids that can, you know, like an average student might be able to do it in an hour and a half, which is in the guidelines, but then the kid that struggles a little bit is taking two and a half hours.
And I know there's that caveat about, you know, signing the note in with your child and say, you know, it's enough already, too much, or you can understand, and that's a hard thing sometimes for kids to get there and not have their homework completed, so...
I read that in the Wolf Swamp handbook. It said, "Parents should contact their child's teacher in the event that the child is taking too long or too short a time in completing daily assignments, or if the child is struggling with the work." I think that for sure, to echo what Russ is saying, we need to make sure that everybody understands what's gonna be in place in the interim, as we're going through this process of really digging our heels in, or digging our hands into this homework question, as Marty said, and really in a grassroots way, getting parents involved, getting the community involved, getting kids involved, and hopefully having consistency across the elementary schools and across the middle schools. So we're not looking at handbooks that are varied with homework times, because right now, they are. They're all sort of different.
What if the message was just to teachers is that the guidelines are not mandatory? You don't have to follow them.
Like speed them.
You know, it's, I mean, I don't even think it was a good idea in the first place necessarily to say, this is what you all have to follow all the time. Because kids are different, classes are different.
You're talking about what's in the handbooks?
The guidelines.
Well, the very nature of the word guidelines should give people license to, you know...
I think people are really trying to follow it closely, and that's, which understandable, just like kids aren't sending in, they're not sending in the note saying, "I didn't do it," which I even told my own kids to do occasionally, and they don't do it.
Well, I'll just say, in the interest of time, I defer to the administration.
Yeah, I think the, you know, if the new guidelines are not going to be in your new handbooks, then you would, you would have to sort of revert back to the old language. But I would want to sort of give the principals some latitude to direct their, provide some in the interim, provide some direction to your staff on what makes sense, what's developmentally appropriate, what's appropriate for Long Meadow on homework. And I would want the three, elementary principals especially, to be really saying the same thing.
Yeah.
That would be...
That's really important, just because there's so much, there's a lot, you know, there's a lot of similarities, but there are enough differences. And I think for the middle schools as well, really trying to, whether, you know, whether we're gonna look at trying to consolidate entire handbooks to have, you know, the single elementary handbook, or at least having the same hope for the purposes of this discussion.
There are some elements of the handbook that absolutely should be in common and should be the same, and perhaps we should even have a single elementary handbook, and then there might be school-specific...
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, there might be school-specific things relating to bus, you know, pickup and drop-off and that kind of thing.
But they have like the boilerplate working document that the principals created, and then they would add the addendums, not addendums, but they would add the specifics to their school.
I, my guess would be that the principals would welcome that, that they would want to get on the same page with the handbooks. And that's not, I don't want to mislead you into thinking that that's going to be the case when we bring you handbooks in a few weeks, because we're working off of the handbooks that were revised from last year.
Right.
Right. So, but I think that would, that's a worthy, long-term goal for us.
And then the question too, not for tonight, but moving ahead, is, you know, how can we, as a school committee, provide a platform for discussion in the community? It's a really hot topic. There's lots of new research. There's lots of things that are on social media about homework. And I think that the one glaring issue is, what's happening to reading at night for our kids? It's a big, big concern. Are our children reading for pleasure, the way that they used to read? And I'm hearing they're not. And that's something I want to hear more about and have parents talk more about, that sort of issue. So...
Michelle?
Can I make a motion?
You can.
With Marty's language?
Yes.
To have him, you know, relieve the staff of the mandatory guidelines and to, you know, develop wording that lets them feel academic freedom and to use their discretion, the way you said it. Can I motion to...
And do we want to ask the school councils to take, also, because it's 100% appropriate, if the school committee would like to ask the school councils to take on this issue, take on this issue as a policy issue at their schools? It's, if the committee feels comfortable, I would add that language as well for this year.
Sure. I think, I guess what I meant was, as a start, let's release the guidelines so that they feel more freedom, and then add that, so that we figure out a better course of action.
Okay.
We'll come up with a comment statement, and it will take probably a couple of weeks to pull that together, just even the meeting time to make that happen, but we'll make it a priority.
Comment statement to staff.
Comment statement to staff.
No, I guess to parents.
Yeah.
Okay. Two second. Liz, just second. Second. Okay, I didn't hear you. Any more discussion?
Please, no.
Michael would like extended discussion on the homework issue. All those, all those in there.
I like dinner.
Okay, thank you. Oh, my God, my mouth is so dry right now. Next, we have the charter school ballot question discussion.
Okay. John? I'd like to make it in the form of a motion.
Okay.
I move that the Long Meadow School Committee go on record in favor of a vote no on question two. And some background is, back in the springtime, we, an earlier version of this committee voted to support a no vote on question number two. And that, of course, deals with charter schools. There's a large number of...
But did you even just make a motion, John?
Yeah.
Let's get the motion right, the language. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Okay, sure.
I just want to have that correct in our minutes and then get a second on it. Would you repeat that for Diane?
Okay.
The Long Meadow School...
I moved that the Long Meadow School Committee go on record on behalf of a vote no on question two on the November 8th, the 8th?
Yep.
Election. It's a valid question in Massachusetts.
Okay, okay. Thanks, so we can discuss that now.
Second.
Second.
Michael's second.
Okay, well, quickly, we did go on record on behalf of a vote no on two back in the springtime.
Yep.
We are among something like, close to 90% of the school committees that have taken a position on this to endorse a vote no on it. The principal reason, and I think I'll just stick to this, is it is a potential major loss of income for us if there is, if they do not keep the cap on charter schools. And I asked Tom to look up some information, and this is available on the website of the Department of Revenue, so anyone can go look it up. But basically, under Chapter 70, we got $4,587,691. And charter school tuition, because we do have some charter school students, was only $36,602. Some of the advertising implies, oh, we'll get our money back, but that, that's not true. We will not get what we lose back. We do get a small compensation, a small reimbursement, but that's only for a few years, I think, six. And after that, there's no more obligation. But right now, the Commonwealth is not living up to its responsibility with respect to state aid. Several groups have said, we really need a $1 billion increase in state aid to school districts under Chapter 70. Now, that's a revenue question, a political question, but the reality of it right now is, we're getting $4,587, and if this passes down the road, we're gonna get less, which means it's more difficult for us to educate the children who will stay in our district. And there's not much interest, as I see it, based on the numbers who have applied already in our district, to send children off to charter schools. So basically, it's a money question, as I see it. And I'll stop there. Michael? I'm sorry.
Michael?
Uh, yes. So I'm going to, I'm gonna join John in voicing my opposition to question two. 97% of students in Massachusetts go to a public district school. So we're talking about a little bit less than 3% of students, not even. We're talking about about 23,000 students remaining on waiting lists. And one of the things that doesn't get across is that there is capacity within the existing cap. There is room for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to grant new charters, and that this ballot question would enable, would, it would spur an increase of 12, an increase of 12 charters per year indefinitely. There's a lot of problems with that. The first is accountability. These schools are public schools that have no accountability to taxpayers. The seven of us sit here, fully accountable to the residents and voters of this community. We are fully accountable to the taxpayers in this community. We pay a portion, as John said, of our Chapter 70, to support our student tuitions at these schools. And yet, there's no reporting that these students have, that these schools have to do. And, you know, there are good charter schools, and the schools that our kids go to in Long Meadow are places like Pioneer Valley Performing Arts and the Chinese Immersion School in Hadley that serve a niche, and they serve, you know, to provide students with educational experiences that, quite honestly, we cannot do here. So there are good charters. This is not to demonize charters. But where there are charters that are not doing their job, they're basically, they serve underserved communities. They exist in underserved communities where the, you know, portion of students who attend them are typically low-income, they're typically students of color, and, or they, or, and those are the same students who are getting disciplined out. They're getting disciplined out whether they're being adjudicated in the criminal justice system, they're being disciplined out whether they're, if they're performing too poorly on examinations, if they have minor behavioral issues, if they have an IEP. So we're talking about students who are, you know, in need of a free and appropriate education in a least restrictive environment. And we're talking about schools that are not serving these students well. And so before we get into this, you know, debate about, let's have more charters, let's have them, you know, fulfill their duty under the Education Reform Act, which is to be laboratories for public schools, to share best practices, we need to fix the existing charter schools that exist in Massachusetts. I'm not demonizing charter schools. There are bad charters, though, just as there are bad public schools throughout this country. And rather than investing additional resources into schools that need, you know, into these school, into new schools, why don't we take this funding and invest in our existing public education? We know how to spend that money very well. Springfield knows how to spend that money the right way. Camden Wilbraham knows how to spend the money the right way. So let's invest in our own, let's invest in our students. Let's make sure that we don't need to send students to charter schools. Let's make sure that we can do the job and do the right, and do right by our students. So, you know, I don't think that this is the time for us to be increasing the cap. And I think as leaders in this community and for the school community, it's our obligation to, you know, stand with our students and to protect the interests of our students. And I might add that our teachers are not supportive of this, and I know the MTA is planning to give us all some information very soon about their opposition as well.
Steph?
I echo pretty much everything you said. What I'm wondering is, what is our role as a school committee in terms of, you know, and I know that all, there's been a lot of school committees who have sent forth their vote against this, but I'm wondering, what is our role as a school committee in terms of making these statements? And do we want to make these statements? Do we want to do it individually? What is the goal of doing it as a group?
I think...
I'll respond to that.
Go ahead, John.
Well, we do have a role. We are among the best-informed people in town with respect to school issues in general, because we do it every two weeks, we get together and we get briefed on what's going on. There's a precedent on casinos. This committee took a position and spoke out against casinos. True, we're not telling people how to vote. We're recommending a vote no on this question. And people, I hope, will react and are free to react in either two ways. They can agree with us, or they can say, well, why are they doing that? And start looking into this question, and maybe dig for some facts. So I see it as a role of leadership, giving some guidance to the public on a question that's going to affect their pocketbooks, and in Long Meadow, have a direct effect on the school budget.
I agree with John. I don't think that we need to necess... Liz, did you want to talk?
No.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought you were gonna... I don't think we need to...
Nodding off.
No, I feel the same way. I don't think we need to necessarily become, you know, a politically active school committee, but I agree, I think, with, you know, Michael said and what John said, that it's really, this particular issue, I do feel strongly that our committee needs to really make a statement about, I wouldn't necessarily say that about, about all the issues.
And if I can add, we adopted a resolution, so we weren't actually saying, like, as a committee, like, we adopted certain language that, you know, gave reasons why we oppose it, which, so the parameters in which we're opposing the cap increase are pretty narrow to that resolution.
Russ?
So I'm gonna abstain from the conversation, because our firm represents a lot of public schools, but also a handful of charters. So I'm not going to engage in this conversation. I don't want to lighten the vibe.
And I also, yeah, I appreciate that, Russ. And I also think, as Michael stated, this is not a vote against charter schools. And I think that, Michael, you did a very good job of explaining. We're talking about wait, stop, think before we're increasing. What are we doing? What regulations do we have in place? How is this gonna look? So, and there are some wonderful charter schools in our area...
I don't want to demonize them.
...that provide an incredible service to our community. So with that, if everybody's ready to vote, we'll take a vote on John's motion. All those in favor? Opposed and abstaining? Thank you.
Thank you.
And John, I thank you for really keeping this on our radar.
Okay.
It's really a tribute to you, so thank you.
I'd like to thank Tom for getting some, doing some research on the record.
Oh, thank you, Tom.
And it is available on the Department of Revenue website for anyone who wants to look into it.
And John's talking about cherry sheets, if you actually want to know where to find them. It's under the cherry sheet page.
I can save everybody the trouble. Let me know, and I have the documents.
That's for the public. The public can find the cherry sheets.
You really want to offer yourself up like that?
I am.
If you want to reach Tom. Okay. Oh, yes, we, Russ, next on our agenda. The Municipal Modernization Act, and then warrants. We're almost there, folks.
So I guess I'm listed because I said something about the warrants last time?
I think so.
So basically, we could switch to one person voting the warrant, or approving the warrant, and then just bringing it to us at a future meeting. And because of our summer issues, I think that would make some sense. The one thing I don't recall, though, is when that law is effective, if it was immediate or if there's a later date.
There's certain provisions that are effective immediately in some way.
So anyway, I think once we figure that out, at some future meeting, we should vote on that.
Okay.
Be my recommendation.
To adopt it as our policy? Okay, okay. Good job.
You see any problem with that, Tom?
I don't. I, I think it's probably a good move, and I think unfortunately, my interpretation, we might have to vote to designate similar to what we do for the payroll warrant, but I think it's a sensible move.
The question, yeah. The question would just be, is it the same, is it the same personnel summer, or are we gonna be able to have people rotate?
I think if it's voted and you're designating individuals for a particular meeting, I think that would be fine.
Okay, good. Okay, and who would like to make the motion for the warrants?
Well, I checked the warrants. I have it here.
Thank you.
I move the school committee approve the warrant batch number 2200 of the school lunch fund fiscal year 2017 dated 30 September 2016 in the amount of $312.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Stephanie, are you in favor as well?
Oh. Okay.
I did.
Michael.
Okay. I move the.
You heard him.
Did that? I move the school committee approve the warrant batch number 3280 of the general fund fiscal year 2017 dated 30 September 2016 in the amount of $302,029.20.
Second.
All those in favor?
That's it now.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Are you tabling?